Good evening, Cambie. Welcome to the Cambie City Council Regular Session for June 15th of 2022. This is actually bringing us back into session because the council had an executive session prior to this evening. So if you'll please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this great community. I lift up our leaders of this community. Please give them wisdom and strength to do what's right, make right decisions, be thoughtful. I want to say, give thanks for our city staff and the hard work that they put in. And I also want to ask for blessings over the class of 2022 high school graduates. Especially the, I believe there's four or five students that have enlisted in the armed services and just ask for extra protection for them as they head off to boot camp here soon. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So as we were joking beforehand, the last meeting in June tends to be a very healthy agenda because that's the year-end wrap-up for us. And so we are closing out the fiscal year of the city and then also turning over and approving budget items for the start of the new fiscal year, which begins July 1. So we do have a pretty heavy-duty meeting agenda for us this evening. But the first, our next item on here is an opportunity for citizen input and community announcements. So it's an opportunity for our citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. So feel free to fill out a yellow card, which I have a number here and we'll go through those. And please bring to the council thoughts or concerns and we will do our best to answer them this evening. Or we will, or I will work with city staff to figure out a time on a future agenda or how we will get you those answers that are asked. And so my first card, I have a lot here regarding one topic. So I'm actually, I know Mr. Patton just filled his out, but if Mr. Patton you want to come up and address the board committee appointment piece?
Good evening. Jason Patton, 1040 North Burt Street here in Cambie. Real quick, I just want to let you know that I know at the previous meeting you had talked about sort of processing appointments or reappointments to the boards and commissions a little differently. And we had a fairly lengthy discussion about some questions regarding this at the planning commission. And it sounds like there are other boards and commissions that have some confusion about how this is supposed to work now, especially as it pertains to folks who are currently sitting on a board or commission and are essentially re-upping or asking to be, to reapply. Whether it's an interview, even if no one is applying, you know, for the position that's vacant, or whether they still have to fill out an application, if that's the case. So I would just say that you may want to do some outreach, not only to the chairs, because I got an email as the chair of the planning commission and the budget committee, but you may want to not only reach out to the chairs, but actually the individual members of some of these boards and commissions and kind of clarify how this process is going to work. Because it sounds like there's some grumbling and some heartache and heartburn at that level that might need to be cleared up. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Next card that I have is Tim Weaver wants to address us about FOB's outdoor seating.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello, sir.
Tim Weaver, Cambie resident 2060 Northeast 19th Ave. Just has brought, been brought to my attention here lately that FOB is in danger of losing their outdoor seating area. And summer is just coming upon us and I feel that this area is very important for his patrons, especially some that may be immunocompromised or worried about COVID that's still going around. And it seems to be that he's being singled out when there is other businesses that are using some public, some using private property. His happens to be private property that he is leasing. And I just feel that he shouldn't be targeted or singled out to lose his area. And if maybe he needs to make that area a little smaller or move it or make other accommodations, he should not lose it entirely. He needs to keep that space, just to be fair. He shouldn't be singled out. I guess that's my main point is everybody has to go to the same rules. So I just hope that we can, you know, do something to accommodate him. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Leanne Puga.
Hello.
Hello.
Leanne Puga, Cambie resident 317 Southeast 15th. I am 50% owner of FOB Tap Room here with my husband, Steve. We bought the business in 2018 and shortly before COVID started, we were only in business a little over a year. As a nurse, I was concerned about COVID and the safety of our patrons. And I was happy that the open-air program was available to us at that time. I have a few notes, if you don't mind.
No, absolutely.
Look at them. So we were very thankful to the city, to property managers for allowing us that outdoor seating. In the meantime, we have spent money on tables, on umbrellas and heaters to make that an inviting area. And we would like the chance to be able to make up some of that money we've spent as well as the money we've lost during COVID. Without this area, without the support of our wonderful customers, we may have had to close our doors. So we ask that you would consider granting us an extension to keep this program open at least through the end of October while we can make other arrangements. And we thank you for your time.
Thanks, Leanne. Appreciate it. Mr. Steve Puga.
I'm going to warn you, I have some notes here. So Steve Puga, 317 Southeast 15th Place. So hello, my name's Steve Puga, co-owner. I've also recently been diagnosed as a permanently partially disabled American and the minority in this woman minority business that we own. I wanted to thank everyone for their time for coming out tonight to support FOB. We are here to discuss our outdoor seating currently in use at FOB. As we all would imagine, this is not something I would prefer to have happened because it was due to a pandemic. But the outdoor seating has turned into a topic of conversation. Our goal is to make sure that we work well with the city and support everybody as much as we can. In talking to my property manager and the owners that own that private property, I have a few quick points that I wanted to bring up. First, we are concerned that we were not provided a chance to previously offer a solution prior to, prior to the decision being made last month by city council members requesting FOB to take down our outdoor seating by 1 July 2022. We'd like the city of Cambie to understand that our outdoor seating is indeed private property. We've worked hard with Clackamas County and with the city, thankfully, with your assistance with the open-air program to provide access for folks to come out and enjoy during these tough times. The other challenging thing is due to the backlog that I think many people are aware of due to the state of Oregon being pummeled with rain. There's a lot of paving and paint striping delays currently. In talking to my property manager, this is also the same thing for us. So they've basically told me there's no way we can get this, this location restripped by the 1 July deadline indicated. Additionally, the ADA spots that we relocated were indeed in compliance with Clackamas County. So we, I actually, my wife and I paid to have those moved to that location just in front, kind of adjacent between the Thai restaurant and the gym. So basically just trying to figure out how those, you know, if we end up do, if we end up losing a spot, it's going to turn into just a regular parking spot rather than an ADA spot. We'd also like to ensure the city of Cambie understands that our outdoor seating is indeed in the best interest of the city. Again, as a woman and minority-owned family business, we don't just live here, but we pay taxes here as residents and as business owners. We employ many people from the city. We take care of our veterans in the city. We buy from a large distributor located in the city, you guys might know, by Columbia Distribution. So in terms of what we do and what we try to, you know, commit to this community, I think we do a pretty good job to spread that around as much as we can. As you heard, my wife, Leanne, is a nurse. Again, COVID is still presenting a significant challenge. We've got a lot of colleagues, friends of ours that have currently, that are currently going through that at this point. Again, trying to recoup those lost revenues out there for two and a half years has been significant. Again, as my wife indicated, we are requesting an extension ideally through the end of October. Our plan is to work on an extended sidewalk redesign, of which I can send details to whomever, Mayor Hudson. But that would include the space in front of FOB, which would align with the city's, the city of Cambie's currently approved sidewalk cafe program. Finally, as a small business owner whose primary calling card is to attract new customers to an inviting environment, typically indoors because of our limited sidewalk space currently, COVID-19 has likely forever altered our operating landscape. And that's something my wife and I have seen every day of the week and it's not been easy to do. To be honest, we're a little, I would say I'm a little disheartened that the city made this recommendation last month, as is my property manager, given this time that's, that we're all going through right now. Lost revenues for small businesses, people getting sick, people dying. We spent, again, as my wife indicated, thousands, over $10,000 on trying to keep our place afloat by buying various things to do these things. I would imagine businesses across the nation, because I have a lot of friends who are small business owners, of course, including FOB, would easily count the revenue generated by outdoor seating as a key aspect to the livelihood. Again, as, without this offering, we are being disadvantaged from the start and we are certainly set up for failure. And again, as I said, appreciate you guys' time and we do ask for an extension as indicated, hopefully by the end of October. And I'm happy to, again, provide details to city council in terms of what myself, the property owners and the property manager are trying to line up in terms of a outdoor sidewalk extension. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. What I'm, will do here is just going to give everyone an opportunity to make their comments and then I'll do the best that I can to address some of these things. Next up is Mr. Perez. Hi, Greg.
Hey. Greg Perez, 1121 Northwest 12th Avenue, Cambie, Oregon. Before I start, I'd like to ask each and every one of the council members if they support Cambie and to buy local. Yourself?
Greg, I get what you're.
No, I'm just.
I know, but you need to make sure that the comments come to me and we're not putting counselors on the.
Okay, well, I'd like to know if your council supports the local business owners and buying local.
I, well, I will say since you're addressing me on the matter, that yes, I do.
The city has that on their website also, do they not?
It does, in fact.
Okay. So my question to, I guess, the city council is, I think that FOB needs to be afforded the opportunity to relook the sunset rule and put it back into effect from May 1st to October 1st. It's a temporary thing. We know that. If he's going to do something permanent, he'll go through the planning department. We already know that. But the thing is, I feel that we don't know enough about this and we're supposed to be supporting local businesses. And by shutting them down during the busy period from May 1st to October 1st is detrimental to his business. I mean, just shut it off. Why not take into consideration to reopen this? Because it's not legal or illegal to open it, because I consulted an attorney today, to relook this and have it go from May 1st to October 1st. And this will be temporary and I think Steve agreed that he would take the stuff down and it would be parking spaces from October till the beginning again. And that's what we're looking at. We want it to be looked at again and give this small business a fair chance. Unless you've been in a food or beverage business, you would not understand. I'm not saying you, I'm just saying this out loud.
Right.
I'm not bragging, been there, done that. But I don't think they understand how they're hurting the business. Now, if we're going to be going forward like we're doing to this small business, is this going to affect Oregon City Brewing coming into the library area? What are their obstacles going to be? Who's going to throw something in front of them? We're going to go through the ADA thing again. We're going to go through the parking thing again. So fix it now before it gets worse. You need to be able to handle this now and don't let it snowball when you're hurting the small person in Cambie. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Turner, also about FOB.
Hi, I'm Jerry Turner. I live at 8119 Southwest Ryber Road in Wilsonville. I own Pioneer Properties, I own 25% of Pioneer Properties in Cambie in the industrial park. It's the property that Franklin Electric leases from us. I started Ancestry Brewery in 2015 and grew it into a brewery and a taproom there in Twalatin and added two more taprooms, one in Selwood. And then a few years ago, we added 43rd and Hawthorne, Southeast Hawthorne. And COVID hit six months after we started the Hawthorne location. In the last two years, that business was closed for nine months and it was half-open for 15 months. And we lost money, needless to say. I had a cook who got married in Halloween last year and his wife died of COVID the day before Christmas and he left in February. And I can't get cooks. I had 14 people apply. We had interviews set up with four of them and nobody showed up for the interview. And that's kind of the way it is trying to get help out there is people check a box so they can get their unemployment. Anyway, that's the way I read it. That location was broken into twice over that two-year period. Cost us a lot of money. And I finally sold it in, in May for about 40% of what we had into it. We had $300,000 into it and I sold it for $115,000 just so I could get out from under the rest of the rent, which was $10,000 a month. Also, the Selwood location, my cook left in the middle of April. Still can't get a cook. I don't know if I'm going to open it or not, but I'm kind of leaning now towards seeing if I can find somebody to take over the lease, get out of the rent and get out of Monoma County because it's a real disaster to try to be there. The Hawthorne location, they said, well, you can use, we've got a huge sidewalk. Well, you can use the sidewalk. Well, people sleep there all night long, so it's not very conducive for that sort of thing. Steve and I got to be somewhat friends over the last year, kind of commiserating about COVID and all the other. COVID and all the other things that were going on with our businesses, and, you know, I really fully understand what he's going through. And we're just now starting to get back to where we're about 60 or 70% at Tuallaton of where we used to be. They said, well, you know, can sales and, and package sales went through the roof when COVID hit. Well, if you're a big business and you could buy cans and bottles, yeah. I just finally got a truckload of bottles I've been trying for two years, but we got a truckload of O R D C bottles. And the cans, I can get 16-ounce cans now, I still can't get 8-ounce cans. And if you want to get painted cans, you have to buy six truckloads, which is almost a million cans. So anyway, that's kind of where I'm at, and I really can relate to what he's going through and urge you to really reconsider what you're doing there at that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. It's good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Travis Schultz, and then after that is Kenneth Chard.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I also have notes. Hello, Mayor Hodson, members of the council. For the record, my name is Travis Schultz, Cambie resident, 495 Southwest 11th Avenue. I'm come before you today to advocate for Friends of Beer's, Friends of Beer's continued use of the outdoor seating area utilizing the two parking spaces. The seating area was born in the dark days of the pandemic. The outdoor area was a way to allow businesses to reopen, but at FOB it became so much more. While nightly news showed images of a world tearing itself apart, the FOB family came together under a canopy with one wall covering no more than 25%. As we rotated time at the propane heater and avoided the puddles within that canopy, we talked of many things, but most importantly, and rarely directly, we reassured one another that you are not alone in this. Those two parking spaces became our safe harbor in the storm. When the pandemic restrictions relaxed, the outdoor area remained popular. It represented then, as now, a sense of community so critical to we humans. FOB was not always such a bastion, though it has always been a very cool place. A change in philosophy occurred when Leanne and Steve purchased FOB, a change that is at once simple and profound. Humbly stated, all the establishment's patrons should know one another. If one was shy or reluctant, Steve would initiate the introductions himself. It sounds gimmicky, I know. I thought the same thing until I found myself seated between a 21-year-old kid who moved to Cambie from Maryland and a 91-year-old who could tell you what the area looked like in the 1940s. It is a continuity of experience that is tough to equal anywhere. That philosophy can be seen throughout FOB's layout to facilitate patrons meeting new people, and nowhere emphasizes this philosophy better than the outdoor seating area. Gone are the square tables to promote social distancing, replaced with long tables and benches to encourage one and all to make new friends of beer. On any warm day, you can witness conversations between an IT nerd and a Vietnam veteran, a welder and a wildlife biologist, a truck driver and a nurse, among the myriad of others, and that is what makes this area so special. On sunny days, my wife and I walk to FOB's outdoor area with our dogs and generally meet other dog owners. Whether you drove, walked, or biked there, with or without a dog, you are welcomed in. Cambie is an amazing place, with a sense of community I was not sure I would find west of the Cascades. Friends of Beer have, has been a part of my Cambie experience from the very beginning of it. I realize the space was not originally intended as a patio for FOB, but that does not mean that it shouldn't be. Just because it was derived of brutal necessity should not preclude the seating area's continued existence in brighter days. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to here, speaker, and if you have any questions, I can answer.
Thank you, Travis, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Chard.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Chard. I am not a resident of Cambie, but I work in Cambie at Advanced Flight Systems. I have a membership at the Cambie Pool and at Club Fit. I've been involved with the Cambie swim team for over a decade now. I'm a referee with, with the Cambie swim team. My wife and I frequent the FOB several times a month. One of the biggest things I think the FOB brings to the community is a lot of the money spent for food at the FOB that's brought to the FOB is actually from the local businesses, as well, and the outdoor seating allows, provides you an opportunity to bring your pets and have a different seating arrangement. It's very nice. As far as parking goes, the stores around the FOB have all like blocked off their parking, like the UPS store doesn't allow people to park there anyway, and they're actually not taking up handicap or handicap spots. And there's, you know, so I understand that the parking is a mess, but the, the situation they have there is, is very used and loved by the, by the patrons of the FOB and the people of Cambie. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kenneth. The last card I have on, from, citizen input on this particular topic. So how we, kind of a history on this, where we're at with this. So this program was put into place, yes, during the pandemic to be able to allow businesses, specifically restaurants, to be able to have, create an outdoor space for, for seating during the pandemic. It, it was meant to be a temporary fix, stopgap, if you will, regarding just being able to allow this to go on. Some businesses followed it to the T. I remember being over at FOB and having one panel on a very windy day, as people tried to sit outside and have a beer. And then where we had others that maybe went full headlong into full tents and things like that. That's, that was then, this is now. And so that program has, has obviously come up here and as a endpoint, and that's what we're, the conversation was a couple of weeks ago, or last month was, you know, we're at that point of what do we need to do for this program? Continue it, extend it, change it, stop it, and then change it? And so the conversation evolved to, I believe, and so Scott and Joe, please correct me, or any of the council members, decision was to, you know, yes, that it would come to an end here at the end of June, and then therefore, and that was going to give the economic development team time to create a new outdoor seating program. Am I capturing that correctly?
The only thing I would add, Your Honor, is that this had actually been extended once, it had a different sunset date. And so it has been extended for an additional amount of time till now. And I think the discussion of the council seemed to be, what was the reality of, of how much, you know, necessity is there about social distancing and the COVID restrictions that kind of caused us to create the program in the first place, whether those were still intact, or whether we should go forth and maybe try to do something more permanent in a thoughtful way? It sadly doesn't exist today, so, but, but the, the, the direction that we were given from council last meeting was to let it just sunset on the date that it was supposed to after the second extension.
Okay, thank you for those clarifiers. So that's, that's where we're at. So I appreciate everyone coming here this evening and supporting FOB and, and reiterating, you know, your, your love of, of FOB and the outdoor seating spot. The, my, so I, I'm going to, I guess, ask the council if this is something that wants to be taken up as a conversation again, to extend it until we do have something more permanent in place.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the, so for clarity, some of the direction at that meeting was not that we wanted the seating to end permanently, it's that we wanted a permanent solution, one that had different design standards that, that upheld the design standards that we have other businesses do. And direction to staff was to have staff, the, the staff create a program like that. How close are we to that happening? And it, and how long, how much longer do we think it will take to come to us with some design standards we could look at?
Well, I will reiterate what I believe you still know, yeah, Jason Patton, our planning commission chair, is in here, and he had opined that because this would be a planning code, it would have to go through the planning commission, and he had said that their bandwidth right now is, is booked, and that, and if you want to make a statement too, but I, I'll quote him as saying, until after August, it didn't seem like feasible for the planning commission, but...
Jason, did you want to come up and...
I'd be happy to, if you can.
Yep, since you've been brought into this conversation.
Glad I showed up tonight. So at our planning commission meeting on Monday, it was, we were informed that due to some phasing issues with some of the beefy applications that are coming down the pike, the next couple of meetings are actually probably going to be fairly light, and we had planned on tackling the monster that is fence codes here in the city, because that is a huge issue. So I would say that, and I'm, hopefully Don is not going to stab me in the face when he sees me again if I say this, if the city was to put something together fairly expeditiously, there's probably room on the next planning commission meeting to discuss it. But the problem ultimately will be is that because it's a policy change, because it's a code change, there's still the 35-day lead time before it can be implemented.
Yeah, and so it has to go through the planning commission, then it has to go through you guys, and it's an ordinance, so then it has two readings and a second, or then a 30-day wait period.
Is there a, is there a loophole where we could create a temporary program until it was permanently approved by planning commission based on the guidelines that staff directed?
Well, here, here's where we're at today, is, thank goodness, we have a, if, if, if that's the direction you want to go, we have a special meeting set for the 29th of June. This technically isn't on our agenda, so we can't actually have an action item out of it, because we didn't know what was going to happen.
Sure.
And so i- if you guys want us to at least bring it back on the next agenda with the possibility of an action item, we could do that and still not have it expire, if, if that was the council's will, we could take action on it, and just, you can extend it as long as you want, you could just tell us to extend it for...
And that's my, and that's my ask for the, of the council, is to add it for a, for another conversation, for, for a decision to have this dialogue.
Now that I have staff, the questions from staff, my thoughts are, I would be open to talking about it on the 29th when it can be properly noticed. My preference, because one of, yeah, I want to assist FOB and all the people that love FOB, and, you know, I want to be able to do that. One of the challenges was, we were looking to make it more permanent and have certain design standards. If we're open to Jamie and the economic development staff working with FOB on what those standards might look like, so they can, you know, and then we can maybe create a temporary program with those design standards while they're going through, while those design standards are going through planning commission, I'm open to a solution like that. I'm open to creative solution that gets the goal we were looking for, which is design standards, because we've already extended the program with the intent to have improved design standards and helps FOB keep that space open. I think that there's a, I think there's an in-between there that I would love to discuss, if, if staff thinks that that's something that can happen, and if FOB is willing to work with staff on that, yeah.
Thanks, Jason. Sure can, Steve.
So to, to that point, that's kind of what I alluded to in my statement, so that would be fantastic. So we've already, as you guys can all imagine, that grew out of necessity, as everybody knows. It's not what we wanted, it's not what the owners of that site wanted it to look like. It's not even what I want it to look like, but we spent a lot of money to try to retrofit it, to make it look more conducive to a nice, clean environment. So we've already engaged with, we've already created a rendering of what that space would look like. I've sent it to my property manager as of two days ago. So it did create a space that, let's say, we could have, basically, we're trying to do to help, because I talked to Don Hardy, and he said, Steve, bandwidth-wise, he wasn't sure when he could actually get to that. And I said, okay, Don, so what if we created a, an extension of our sidewalk, which is essentially permanent, which aligns with the city's current program? So we're in, you know, compliance with that, in that respect, and it looks markedly better, right? It is literally, it's like a, it's a nice, if you've, anybody, I grew up in Portland, don't throw stones if you don't like Portland, but it's basically like a Portland-esque, yeah, you're out of here. It's a Portland-esque thing, where it's literally, it's just an island, it's a concrete island, it's literally the height of a, of a sidewalk, a city sidewalk. It would just extend off the front of, of FOB's existing sidewalk, and it would have all the protection there, the barriers, you know, the posts that are like four feet tall, planner boxes, I'd retrofit my lights to be bolted into the ground. In my initial conversations with ownership and property management, they are in agreement, they like to see that happen, because they realize this has been born out of necessity. So to your point, yes, that's exactly what we're trying to do, but given what Don told me, I don't know if we have the time, I mean, we're going to work on that process, but as I alluded to, the, the paving, the striping, I mean, they're backlogged on 20-plus properties that they told me throughout the state of Oregon that my property manager owns and maintains. So they said, just please try to get them to give you an extension, and then during that timeframe, I can provide whatever I need to, to whomever, and say, here's, here's the renderings, here's the dimensions, here's all that stuff, it's going to be in compliance with the cafe sidewalk program. It would look like a, literally just an island, but if we could have help to extend this, at least in the interim, while we work on that with you guys, it would give us the ability to capitalize and try to recoup all the money that we lost, as people indicate, I mean, you've been out there, I mean, it's like, try to have people enjoy that space, but turn it into a space, kind of in the interim, that's going to look permanent, it's going to serve the community well, you know what I mean? And, but I just need some time to do it, and of course, everything's so backlog, that's kind of where I'm at. So I'm totally tracking where you're at, and that's where we want to get to. But of course, that doesn't happen if we shut it down, then we lose outdoor revenue. Well, then I've, I've already spent money to have those spots relocated, which is a fortune to do, anybody who's ever dealt with paving and concrete, it's, it's so crazy expensive. So I want to do that, that is our plan, I already have a rendering, I'd be happy to send to council and begin that process, if we could just possibly, please, please, just get an extension, you know, because we, I think a lot, a lot of you guys have come to our Oktoberfest event, it's an outdoor event, just to get us through that period, and in the interim, I think we could work on that solution.
Brian, if I may? Yeah, Greg, Councilor Varwig first, and then I'll come back to you, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, yeah. So I, I just want to say thank you to all of you who showed up to give comment to us. It's folks like you who helped people like Steve and other small business owners make it through probably the toughest two years of their lives. Nobody wanted to be a business owner during COVID. And so thank you to all of you who support our small businesses and our local businesses. I'm, I'm proud to serve this community because of people like you. I, I am absolutely in favor of revisiting this on the 29th. I, I want to see if we can find a way to, to create something temporary so that they can get, or keep the space. So I, I heard a comment of feeling targeted, and I, I don't know if, and I, obviously I was part of the conversation a month ago, and if anything I said seemed targeting, I, Steve, I apologize, it certainly was not my intention whatsoever to target any certain business. I am really proud of our economic development department for putting stuff like this together, and I absolutely want a permanent program that makes it possible for businesses like FOB and Backstock or any other local business to have areas that help them be successful. So if we can revisit this on the 29th, I would be all for it, so that we can find a way to, to keep this for them.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Well, let me add to Councilor Varwig's apology. I somehow had assumed there had been a consultation. Staff had told us that there was only one business that had been affected. I wish I would have had this testimony at the time that I made my decision, because it would have been a different decision. The big picture, of course, is, is we were trying, trying to have a permanent program where good players like you will put an investment in. What we were trying to get away from was the idea of shaggy tents and tarps. And what my recommendation would have been, had I heard this testimony a couple of weeks ago, would have been to put in an interim fix as well, and until we could move on to a permanent, uh, uh, policy, which I think we need to do. But I'm with Sean, I'll, I'm ready to retackle this. Staff, you can come back with a couple of recommendations. I'd even be willing to vote for an extension, like Steve said, vote for an extension until October. There may be some collateral issues of other people then wanting to apply for the temporary thing and that sort of thing. I'll let staff... I'll let staff work that out. But thank you. You presented a compelling argument tonight.
Any other comments at all? Or, yes, Councilor Marine?
You know, I'm very, very moved by the information that was presented here tonight. I was one of the votes to vote to let this sun set. And I'm really definitely having a change of heart now. Yeah, I mean, we don't, we're not here to put undue strain on businesses. We want, we want them to be successful. And the presentation, I agree with Greg. If I had heard this before we voted, I probably wouldn't, would have voted for the extension. So absolutely, I would encourage staff to come up with some solutions and come back to us on the 29th.
Thank you. I think we've got a consensus here. Well, Scott and I will work on figuring that out for the agenda on the 29th. So, so thank you, Councilor. I appreciate you being willing to revisit this. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'm sharing.
Steve is this, so plan on, we'll try to get it scheduled for the 29th to be, for more dialogue, so.
Does that technically mean hopefully there'll be something extended because obviously that's end of June?
Mayor will, will have a, the, so it isn't an ordinance, it's only a resolution. And so it can be effectively extended, you know, once they pass that. What we can't do is, we have to notice for public meetings law. If there's an action item, it has to be in the paper first and everybody has the ability to know what we're doing. So it's just daylight rules. So it technically has to just be done that way. I can't make a promise to how they're going to vote. I think you could probably count the votes as you went around the dais. But I, we're going to come with that option. And then if we can get creative, we'll try to have another. And perhaps we could have Don Hardy reach out to you and let you know what those options are.
Yeah, I think Joe did a good job of explaining just during comment section like this, we just, we, and it's not a notice piece for a council meeting, we just can't arbitrarily make a decision, you know? And that's why the conversation was about putting it on a future agenda to talk about it. And so we're going to, Scott and I will shuffle some things on the agenda. And it's a lighter meeting to begin with, but we'll, we'll see what we can do to get that on there. But yeah, one of, one of the action items could be that the council decides to extend it or create some parameters to be able to extend it effectively that evening. So, yes, Councilor Spohm.
Can I just ask that staff asked Jamie and Don to keep an open dialogue with Steve over the next couple of weeks in case there are slight modifications to what the extension looks like or anything that Steve have ample notice to what will be recommended to us? Because the 29th is to date, is like the day before. So just, just to give Steve as much time as possible to comply if there are any adjustments in the recommendation, that would, I think, be really helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Great. Well, as everyone said, thank you all for coming and standing behind Steve and his family and his business. So I think encapsulates what Cambie's about and has been about for a very long time. So thank you all for being here. You're welcome to stay. We're going to talk about the city budget. We have some public hearings on noise variances, all very exciting stuff.
Shared revenue?
Shared revenue. Is FOB open? Can we, can we put this on hiatus and go have a beer? Sorry. I'll give, give the room a moment to clear. Okay, moving into the rest of our agenda this evening, I'm sorry, I don't have any other yellow cards. There's nobody that's emailed in, Melissa, about wanting to address us? Okay, so I'll move into the first of our four public hearings. The first one is regarding a noise variance request from the Wild Hair Salon and Café. There's two O's, thank you, saloon. That sounded weird. Sorry, Joan. Yeah, the saloon. Jeez, one typo and I. The Wild Hair Saloon and Café located at 1190 Southwest First Avenue. The variance is to allow live music that will be performed outside on Friday and Saturdays in August and September of 2022 from 7:00 PM to 10:30 PM. And then August 5th, 6th, 13th, 19th, 20th, 26th, and September 10th and 17th. There have been no comments regarding this so far. And then I believe Ms. Monan is on deck to address us if we have any questions. So I'll read my blurb here. The matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. Opportunity was given to sign up to provide testimony. No one has signed up to speak on this topic or has submitted comments or testimony. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? All right, seeing none. The public hearing regarding, okay. Jumping ahead, I was really excited to get to the next one. So we don't have anything, but Joe, staff, any comments or questions or anything we need to know?
I think you described what it was for, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we have any other comments other than it's just the application for those outdoor music events to happen.
And, and I will say this, I don't believe, I'm unaware of any noise complaints that have come, and they have had these in the past.
No, thank you. I know that's been one of our clarifying questions was, has there been carryover from previous noise, noise variance requests? So any other questions for staff at all?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir. Perfect. Man, I'm all, hang on. Yes, so we're good with staff. Any discussion? I'm out of practice these, Jason. I will close the public hearing. I will take a motion.
I move to grant a noise variance to the Wild Hair Saloon and Café for, to allow live music on Friday and Saturdays in August and September of 2022 from 7:00 PM to 10:30 PM on August 5th, 6th, 13th, 19th, 20th, 26th, and 27th, as well as September 10th and 17th. Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Varwig and seconded by Councilor Marine to approve the noise variance request from the Wild Hair Saloon located at 1190 Southwest First Avenue. The variance is for Friday and Saturdays in August and September of 2022 from 7:00 PM until 10:30 PM, August 5th, 6th, 13th, 19th, 20th, 26th, and 27th, and then September 10th and 17th. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That carries 5-0. Our next public hearing is regarding the proposed changes to the master fee schedule. And so staff report will be, again, going with the pleasantries of before. I don't think we have any comments on it necessarily, but we will do a staff report from Director Eric Cottola. And then questions if by the hearing body, and then any public testimony. And then I'll close the public hearing and then questions and discussion. So Eric, would you like to come up to the mic?
And while Eric's coming up, Mayor, members of council, I'll just note that this and the next two items for public hearings are related to items that will be, you'll be taking action items for budget adoption and all the various components that go with that. So the staff report will probably be a similar conversation in two different pieces. So we can try to kind of keep that limited and allow you to answer any questions. I think Mr. Hardy was also going to help explain some of the planning-related fee changes as we were actually doing the adopting resolution later in the agenda. So I don't know how much Eric will be able to want to take a dive into that. But yeah, maybe Don is hearing us talking and.
We're not doing the staff report right now, though, right?
I think just a, just a quick overview, but we'll really want to explain more in depth as we do the adopting resolution later in the agenda. The purpose is, these public hearings are required for you to take any potential public testimony related to these adopting items. These are required by budget law, so.
Before you change your fee.
So shouldn't those changes be actually in the hearing then?
Yeah, we can give a, we can give an overview of those, of those fee changes.
Okay, well, the city staff just reviewed the master fee schedule this year and made proposed changes. I'm not going to go into all the detail, but some of the fee changes would be for the library, the utility fees, SDC fees, and then there's a lot of planning changes, planning fee changes that we have proposed.
So our standard fare at this time of the year for changing fees for next year?
Anything unusual?
Pardon me?
Anything unusual or different from what we usually see that should be itemized for people that are, might participate in the hearing?
The SDC fees are all going up by a set percentage, and then planning just has a lot of changes.
I would, I would suggest, we were, as I said, we were thinking Don would go through this more in detail later. But I think this would be a good time to have Mr. Hardy come up and just walk you through. Those are probably the most substantial things as we've been under, with, with council's direction to do so. We've been reviewing our, our planning fees. Don and his team have been, and Mr. Patton, our planning chair, and others have been working on this. So I think this would be an appropriate time to have Don just kind of walk you through those, those changes. And then maybe we'll give you a lighter version of this since we're giving you the, or expanded version now later in the agenda.
And, and I might add, a lot of these fee changes, you know, we always strive, and it was your direction to do so, for some cost recovery from our fees. And so we really are trying to capture, of course, inflation's gone up and stuff. So people's time is more expensive, so we are trying to recover some of these costs. And you'll see that really highlighted here in the planning changes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. That was a good intro to the fees of, the permit fees that we're looking at raising. Kind of the overarching piece of this is we're trying to really look at more cost recovery, as Joe mentioned. I think also in specific, we're trying to be really in the middle of the pack for comparative jurisdictions. And so there was a cost evaluation that we did across the board. Fortunately, City of Sandy had already done that, and so we borrowed their information. And that looked at Oregon City, Malala, Happy Valley, Sandy, Milwaukee, and Lake Oswego as comparative jurisdictions. And City of Cambie was way low compared to all those jurisdictions. The state law talks about two possible scenarios for collecting fees. You can either do the actual cost, be the average cost for collecting fees. And so we've looked at more of the average cost because we've not done a cost recovery assessment, which would be necessary to do actual cost. Actual cost would be higher than average cost. So kind of as an overarching piece, a lot of these fees are going up a fairly nominal amount as an increase. We believe they're proportionate to the amount of work effort that's involved in these and also comparative to other jurisdictions or in the ballpark. And currently, we're not in the ballpark. There's a huge subsidy going on for these at this point. So I think that's really the overarching piece of this. I wanted to thank Eric for all his work. There's a couple of minor things, and I don't know if I should go through those now in detail. But if you have questions, happy to answer those.
Thanks, Don. My quick question was just about your comment there about, so based on where we're at currently, you're saying that we're high, considerably undervaluing.
We are, yes.
Staff time and resources and whatnot. So based on that study that Sandy did, I mean, we're not, we're not even in the ballpark of what the other cities are.
Yeah, we looked at all those jurisdictions and said, can we get towards the middle of that? And some of our fees are higher now that are proposed. Some of them are lower still. It's, it's a little bit of a range, but I think part of it is being reasonable and looking at what the amount of time that would, it takes staff to go through and do permit processes. I think the fees probably, the baseline fees felt like they were probably at least a decade or older when I first started here. So I mean, they were, they were way out of what other jurisdictions were charging. And then we were doing things like, you, you have the base fee, and then if you have another permit, then you get half of the fee reimbursed back to you. So there were some things that, I mean, essentially, it kind of gets to the point of how much does the general budget cover planning services versus the applicants submittal covering planning services? And other jurisdictions have chosen to be higher. It feels appropriate for Cambie to be in that same pack, in the middle of that pack.
Well, and that actually, when we just did the park master plan review, they shared that based on even where we're at currently, we're not even in the middle of the pack in terms of park, park master fee or park SDC fees. When, you know, I know that's something that we're going to be looking at as a policy piece here. So with that being said, are we, are we discussing that? Or is it worth the discussion of reevaluating and looking at a bigger, larger increase in those SDCs and some of those fees?
I think it is. I would encourage the adoption of these fees to capture.
Sure.
At least near term and then doing a more thorough evaluation. It would, it would require a consultation with a consultant to get to that point. This is pretty in-depth work that would need to be done. But it probably would pay off in dividends to look at exactly how much time is being spent. And then for your purview and discretion, it really comes down to what, how far should the needle be towards full cost recovery versus, versus not? You know, that's really part of that discussion. To get into that a little further, I, on the parks piece, to your point, Mr. Mayor, there is, as part of these fees, there is actually the adoption of park master plan fees. I would say that's going to be a revisitation as well, probably mid-year, I would say, because that'll be the next probably chance to adjust those. I know the parks master plan's still going through to double check those fees. These park master plan fees are calibrated again as, as there's a percentage increase on all the SDCs that are happening, as Eric spoke about. But I think that one in particular should be revisited so that it's correct.
Yeah, no, I'm with, I agree with your comment about, we're here tonight. We've got to approve, should approve what we've got in that, you know, down the road here that we could be looking at either an off-cycle fee increase in, in the area of development and/or next budget season or whatever. So, okay. Councilor Varwig?
Yeah, Don, thank you. Do we have, obviously, I know you mentioned we would need a consultant to help us really figure out what our full cost recovery would be. But do we have a guesstimate at how close we are to it or how far away we are from it?
I mean, I would say that it, it's a really challenging question to kind of get into that. And part of this gets somewhat complicated. I've been on the other side where I was a consultant and asked to be on the advisory group for several cities and calibrating the amount of generation for permit fees. And things that to consider, which I can't necessarily speak to, and some of this may be policy direction from the council would be, should the rates be fully loaded? Should they not be fully loaded? Should they be an average composite of a number of people involved? These are kind of variables here. On the private side, I can tell you that, you know, if it was to be calculated, it would be, you know, done differently. Obviously, we're not calibrating that for the private side. But there would be an hourly rate that each person would have. Some of that's a little difficult. Should we, should we include overhead? Should we not include overhead? You know, that's, there's some decisions on that that would need to be made. I'd say our fees now, though, are way, way low. I mean, just I recognize that when I first came on, it's like, these are like super low rates that I've really not seen in, in quite some time.
Yeah, I, I really struggle with charging the taxpayer for staff time to be spent on private enterprise for profit. And so I really would challenge our staff to make it a priority to, to look at what our cost recovery would be so that we can get our fee schedule to 100%, as close to 100% cost recovery as we can. I just don't think taxpayers should be paying, covering the burden of for-profit business. So if we could do that, that'd be great. But yeah, I think we definitely need to get some of those fees up for, for those. Thanks, Don.
Sure, you're welcome. And I don't know if I should wait until the actual later. I have a couple of small revisions to the packet that you have before you. I just was wanting to bring those to your attention before the vote tonight.
I see. Would, if you've got them handy, let's do it now and get it on the record for the public hearing.
So in, in your packets, I just wanted to mention just a few, a few things here. So the exhibit B is. So the Exhibit B is the new City of Canby Master Fee Schedule. It will be effective seven one twenty twenty-two instead of seven one twenty twenty-three. That's the first small change. In the, in your packet, I have a couple of small revisions that I would like to make. We've adjusted, we'd like to adjust, and this is called out in the summary sheet that Eric provided. There's a council packet, and then the third page and after the resolution is a summary of all the changes that was provided. So on this, I'd like this to be referenced for the site and design review type two and type three that were, we are inserting these values into the proposed master fee schedule, which would substitute for page, for page fifteen and sixteen under Site and Design Review Type Two and Site and Design Review Type Three. The reason for that change is some of the larger projects take significant effort, and currently they are maxed out, where I think staff is actually spending quite a bit of time beyond what the current maximums are for those two. And we're going with more of a rate that we're proposing based on project valuation, which, so the smaller projects would pay less. What we would propose is actually the type-two processes, they may end up, those are, would be smaller projects, would end up possibly paying less. But the type-three processes going through planning commission and design review would pay more, twenty-five-hundred-dollar base fee, and then it would be based on point zero zero two of the total estimated project value of the project, which the applicants will know. That would give you, as a yardstick, one million dollar project would be two thousand dollars. So, and then those would be maxed out for type-three at twenty thousand dollars and type-two at fifteen thousand dollars. Those also seem reasonable and then in the ballpark of what staff, staff's time would be for these larger projects.
Perfect.
So those are really, that's the only change. Those two changes, just to reference back to the sheet on Site and Design Review, and the rest of it is altogether. Again, thank you for, thank Eric for all of his detailed work. There's a lot of numbers in here, and you kind of get lost when you go through this, and he did an excellent job.
Well, between Eric and then what you've been doing with the planning department and then planning commissions diving into this stuff and figuring it out, so it's appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
When it comes time for the action item, if you just say as amended, we will make sure that those are the amendments that we will put in for the resolution.
We'll say as amended. Yeah, perfect. Great. Any questions for staff at this point on this particular topic?
Can I just, I just want to second what Counselor Varwick said. I think our goal's always been cost recovery, and I get a lot of heartburn over subsidizing, taxpayers subsidizing builders and developers who are making a small fortune on, or sometimes a large fortune on the backs of, of citizens. So full cost recovery is my goal, and I understand that is a process to get there, but I'm all for that process, so.
Okay. I will open up the public hearing for testimony. I don't know if there's anybody proponents or opponents on this at this point. I don't have any cards on it. So I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion by council? Okay, and we'll bring this back around here in our ordinances and resolutions here shortly. The next piece, or public hearing piece, is the State Revenue Sharing Funds. The, so again, the matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. And so, again, going through, we will have a staff report, questions of any by the hearing body, and then I will open up the public hearing for testimony, and then give proponents and opponents, if any, the opportunity to address the hearing body. I'll turn it over to you, Eric.
Okay, I'm just going to read what the background is of the State Revenue Sharing. State Revenue Sharing Law, ORS two-two-one-point-seven-seven-zero, requires cities to annually pass an ordinance or resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. The law mandates public hearings be held by the city, both before Budget Committee to discuss possible uses of the funds, and before the City Council on the proposed uses of the funds in relation to the entire budget. Certification of these hearings are required. This has to be done and filed with the Oregon Department of Admin Services prior to July thirty-first.
And then, in this case, I'll just add, we're going to have an accompanying resolution as well for this one later in your agenda for the action item. We're estimating at two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in the twenty-two-twenty-three budget for receiving the state revenue funds, state revenue sharing funds. As, as Eric just mentioned, it's a requirement that we hold this public hearing, and then we have an adopting resolution. And those, those funds come from a variety of sources, but some of the ones that you may be aware of, I, I include cigarette tax, liquor tax, and then, and then some other, there's just a number of other ones, but really, we want to receive the monies that the state would like to give us in our budget, so we're, we're asking you to support this action items.
We, we don't want the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand? Or do we do?
Think we do.
Okay.
We'd like to do that, yeah.
The annual formality of accepting state revenue, so. Great, thank you. I will open up the public hearing. Well, I guess, questions from council at all? No? I will open the public hearing. I don't think I have any proponents or opponents about accepting state revenue. I will close the public hearing. Any other questions or discussion? All right, and we will take action here coming up. Last hearing is, or public hearing is regarding the two thousand twenty-two-twenty-three fiscal year budget as approved by the Budget Committee. Again, this matter, before the hearing body requires a public hearing. We will go with a staff report, questions of any by the hearing body, and I will open up for public testimony. If there is any, we'll hear it. If not, we'll close the hearing, and then questions from the hearing body, and then discussion. So Eric, I think you're up again.
Okay, I'm just going to read the background on budgets. So Oregon budget law requires adoption of an annual budget by June thirtieth of each year. ORS two-nine-four-point-four-five-three requires the city to hold a public hearing, and ORS two-nine-four-point-four-five-eight requires the city to submit tax certification documents to the county assessor by July fifteenth. The city passed a local option levy of forty-nine cents per thousand of assessed property value on November eighth, twenty sixteen, to fund the swim center operation. The city levies the, the taxes provided for an adopted budget at the permanent rate of three-point-four-eight-eight-six per thousand of assessed property value. The allocation and categorization are subject to the limits of Section eleven B, Article eleven of the Oregon Constitution.
And I'll just, again, add just a couple of quick things. The, the City Budget Committee, which included all of you, of course, and our citizen members, convened on May nineteenth and May twenty-sixth, two meetings where the budget was presented in detail. There were, there was a lot of deliberation and discussion, and the, the Budget Committee ultimately approved and recommended to you a, a budget at the total amount of eighty million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. That is comprised of a total appropriation over all funds of forty-seven million, six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars, and unaprop, total unappropriate and reserve amounts, all funds, thirty-three million, twenty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars. And again, that will be presented to you for adoption as a resolution later in the agenda.
Great. Thank you to the council and staff. I know the staff, city staff starts this process. Eric, I think you jumped in right at Valentine's Day, which was about a month into the process.
Yes.
So it is a, there's no small feat to get caught up and, and bring this, bring this home. So, but thank you to staff and our citizens on our budget committees for being involved in getting us to this point. So is there any questions or conversation for staff on the budget piece? Eric, is there any other input?
I would just like to thank all the staff at, at the city that helped me get all the, the budget prepared, and also the previous finance staff. Had a lot of great documents to start with, so while it was challenging, it, it went pretty smooth with everyone's help.
Great, thank you. If there are no questions for staff, I'll open up the public hearing for testimony. Any proponents regarding the acceptance of the budget, or any opponents about it? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I don't think there's any new questions that will come up, and we'll take action here coming up in a little bit. Thank you, Eric. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. So this is for, includes the approval of the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two special call meeting and May fourth, two thousand twenty-two City Council regular meeting, the reappointment to the Bike and Pet Committee of Britt Ash, reappointments to the Heritage and Landmark Commission, Ron Byrne and Doug Berkland, reappointment of Lewis, or sorry, Lois Brooks to the Library Advisory Board, and then reappointments to the Traffic Safety Commission, Jackie Jones and Eric Van Zant.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two special call meeting, and the May fourth, two thousand twenty-two City Council regular meeting, the reappointment of Member Britt Ash to the Bike, Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee with the term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, reappointments of Members Ron Byrne and Doug Berkland to the Heritage and Landmark Commission with terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, the reappointment of Lois Brooks to the Library Advisory Board with the term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and the reappointments of Jackie Jones and Eric Van Zant to the Traffic Safety Commission with terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Council Varwick to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two special call meeting, and the May fourth, two thousand twenty-two City Council regular meeting, reappointment of Member Britt Ash to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee with a term ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, reappointments of Members Ron Byrne and Doug Berkland to the Heritage and Landmark Commission with terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, reappointment of Lois Brooks to the Library Advisory Board with a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and the reappointments of Jackie Jones and Eric Van Zant to the Traffic Safety Commission with terms ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion or comment? Not seeing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries five zero. Next up on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions. First one is ordinance number one-five-seven-five, an order, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase bus shelters, benches, and lighting from Brascow International of Madison Heights, Michigan, and that is for second reading. Scott, did you want to touch on that as a refresher?
Mayor and members of the council, yes, again, this is just a second reading. We discussed this in detail last week, or last meeting, to purchase those bus shelters and some of the amenities that go with those, mostly to be placed on ninety-nine. This will be kind of timed with some of that work that's going to be done there, but we have no other additional new information for you, but we're just requesting your second reading so we can move it forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions at all for staff? No? I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance one-five-seven-five, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase nine bus shelters with solar lighting and benches, one standalone bench, and one solar light from Brascow International of Madison Heights, Michigan.
One second.
Motion's been made by Council Varwick and seconded by Council President Hensley to approve ordinance number one-five-seven-five, authorizing the city administrator to purchase nine bus shelters with solar lighting and benches, one standalone bench, and one solar light from Brascow International of Madison Heights, Michigan. Roll call vote.
Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Marine?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Counselor Varwick?
Aye.
The motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda is ordinance number one-five-seven-six, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with M.L. Houck Construction Company in the amount of one million, eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-dollar, sixty-five cents for construction of the two thousand twenty-two Street and Utility Improvements Project. And Scott, I'll let you refresh us on that one.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Again, a second reading. We presented a detailed report at the last meeting, and as a reminder, this is for the, what we're referring to as the Locust Street Project Improvements. And again, no new additional information, no new or additional information.
Okay. Great. Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance one-five-seven-six, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with M.L. Houck Construction in the amount of one million, eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for the two thousand twenty-two Street and Utility Improvements Project.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Council Varwick to consider or to approve ordinance number one-five-seven-six, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with M.L. Houck Construction in the amount of one million, eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, sixty-five cents for the two thousand twenty-two Street and Utility Improvements Project. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nope, sorry, roll call vote.
Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Marine?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Counselor Varwick?
Aye.
Moving right along. Next up is ordinance number one-five-seven-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute an amendment to the ground lease between the Canby School District number eighty-six and the City of Canby regarding the real property between and around Canby Swim Center and the Canby Adult Center. Our first reading.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Yes, I am pleased to present to you this, it's an amendment to the existing agreement with the school district. As, as you all know, our swim center and adult center facilities reside on Canby School District property. We have a longstanding arrangement of leases over the history of those two facilities. The most recent, or the current iteration of the agreement dates back to two thousand sixteen, and that's basically a one-year-to-one-year lease that's, has to be renewed or agreed to be renewed or extended each year. The council has, on a number of occasions, had some conversations around this and has expressed a desire for a longer-term arrangement. Some of this was, discussion was a result of, we've talked about some potential improvements to the facilities. In particular, we've had some conversations about perhaps making some investment into the, the swim center and the, I guess, discomfort of doing that with only a year to, a year-to-year lease. Your, your desire to have a longer-term arrangement of some type was also further supported by your recently adopted twenty-two, twenty-two goals. So the council goals actually addressed this. And so council was essentially provided direction to staff to proceed and see if we could find some better arrangement for a longer-term situation. There was, one of the discussion items was whether we went, we might be able to purchase the property. That question was broached, and the school district at this time is not interested in selling us the property. However, one of the key terms in this amendment is that we would have first right of refusal on the property if the school district ever decided they wanted to sell it. So that was a, a key term. So I, I want to note that in conversations that I had with, I've had with Superintendent Dr. Downs over the last couple of months or so in regards to this, and then actually Council President Hensley and I both attended a meeting together to kind of kick this off with Dr. Downs, my counterpart, but the school board chair, and I think?
And vice chair.
Yeah, the vice chair and, and the, and the chair were both there. And so it was a, I would say, and then, and then Dr. Downs and I carried that conversation forward to where we got to this arrangement. I would, I would categor, or characterize the conversations and the whole atmosphere of these, this discussion as very cooperative, collaborative, collegial. There was a, a very strong sense of we, that the school district wanted to work with us to, to provide a longer-term arrangement than we currently have. So I just want to So I just want to express my appreciation to the school district for that part of this. So the key pieces of this, or the key terms that are included in this amendment to the existing lease are that the terms would be modified to begin on July 21, July 1 of 22 for a 10-year agreement. At the end of the 10 years, the lease has two automatic five-year renewal periods if either party doesn't terminate the agreement. So essentially, what we have is a 10-year agreement with two five-year extensions with the potential of up to, up to 20 years. And there seemed to be a sentiment that, that, you know, there wouldn't be the likelihood that there would be other needs for that property, but again, that's, that's kind of how it reads. Again, I mentioned the right of first refusal that is in this amendment. The, all other terms, conditions, and provisions of the current lease are going to remain the same. There's an acknowledgement in this amendment, it's not as clear in our agreement, and the school district asked that we spell out that there's an acknowledgement that the city does provide as a part of this arrangement, the school district's use of that facility, they use it for grade school swim lessons, high school swim teams, and those types of things. So historically, those have been kind of traded out as part of the valuation of the agreement, and this, this essentially memorializes this a little more clearly. And then as far as the, the rent amount that the city pays, we have a rent of $20,000 annually that we currently pay. This is unchanged in the extension of the agreement. So essentially, we pay $20,000 a year for the life of this agreement. Because, because the value of the total of this over time has the potential to be anywhere at a minimum, if it's 10 years, it would be $200,000 that the city would pay, and if it went the full 20 years, we'd pay up to $400,000. That then triggers the need that we have to do this by ordinance because the total expenditure is over the life of the contract. And so we're bringing it to you in an ordinance because of our charter requirement to do that. So with that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but happy to be bringing this forward and asking for your support.
Okay. Council Varway?
Yes, Scott, you made a comment of whether that they could terminate the agreement. Is there a financial impact to the school district if they terminate this agreement? Or how, how solid is that potential 20 years? What would trigger them to terminate the agreement and what does that do for us? Like, how does, how are we protected if they decide they, two years in, they want to terminate the agreement?
Joe, do you want to take, that's a little bit more of a legal question, I think.
Well, so, so the 10-year agreement is a solid agreement. The, the only way that that would be violated is if they decide to sell and then we would get the right of first refusal. The additional five years requires a certain notice, like the January one, I think, before?
Yeah.
The July one, you know, where they, where they would violate. And the presumption is if we get into the first five year, then we're set for the, for 15 years. And then if they don't notice, on year 16, we would be good till year 20. So it really is, those, those trigger points, they have to decide whether or not they're going to let us have another five years or not. But if they don't say anything, it automatically renews for the five years.
So they can't just say, we want to build something over there, so we're, we're going to give you notice and end our lease?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Spoon?
First off, I really appreciate all the work, and I appreciate that the school board came to the table and talked to us about something improved upon what we've had over the last several years. I have a little bit of heartburn over the lease that I'd like to talk about because I read the lease. And so first off, a couple of things. I love that we got first right of refusal. Thank you, school district, thank you, staff. I think that was an important addition to the lease. The five-year extensions, so the 10 years, yes, you're saying that the five years, basically my question is, what's really the difference between having a 10-year lease and a 20-year lease at this point, if we have first right of refusal anyway? And generally, in a lease agreement, if a seller chooses to sell, that can terminate the lease. So what's, what's really the difference between 10-year with two successive five-period renewals and just them working with us on a 20-year lease?
I, I think it was the lift, and Scott could probably speak to this more, I, the members of the school board may or may not be on there 10 years from now either, but I think they, it sounded like they weren't that comfortable with tying up something for so long, so that there was a few trigger points that if there was a decision being made, but out of fairness, if they don't say anything at all, at least it'll become a 15-year, and then if they don't say anything, it'll become a 20-year. And so we don't have to go back and renegotiate.
Right.
But that, that gives a couple of options a decade from now, if boards change and if somebody wants to have a different correction.
Or if we want out of it after 10 years, right?
Well, yeah. Or yes. Hold on, I have a question about that, which is really important. And so before I get to that, though, which is, I have a little bit of heart, $20,000 annually doesn't seem like much, but since we already own the building and the facility, we're basically paying $1,666 a month for the land lease only, plus we're giving them school district free swim lessons and use for the swim team, which I'm not against doing, but I'm just wondering if we've assigned a cost to how much giving them those two things for free comes to, because the $1,666 per month just for the land, leasing the land alone, seems like, I don't know if we've done any cost analysis on whether or not that's a fair lease amount, given the free use we're also providing, and I'm just wondering if staff did any analysis of, of actual value.
The, the short answer is no, we didn't, we haven't done a, an analysis of what the value, it would be pretty easy for us to figure out the, the amount of use and what that, what that translates. So we'd be happy to figure that out and bring it back to council if you'd like that. Really, this was based on just the historical, that's been the historical arrangement, is we, we pay a certain lease amount and they've, they've received that historical use, so they, the school district essentially just asked that we memorialize that use. We didn't get into assigning a value, but they also didn't ask to explore raising our rate. So I think it was just in a, in a very collaborative kind of a, a way, we, we just were quick to kind of want to accept each other's understanding that this was the historical amount. But again, if you want a, a valuation of that, we could, we could certainly figure that out.
Yeah, I don't, that's not where I have the most heartache, but, but, but I am interested because I, I think it's good fiscal practice to know what the value of a lease is and what services we're providing for free as part of that lease. I just think that's good fiscal practice. I don't have a lot of heartache over it because I believe there's a lot of community value in the swim lessons and letting the swim team use it, but I also think there's a lot of community value in the, in having the pool there at all. So my hope would be that we could all just call it even, we'll do some stuff for free, and they understand that we're in a lease for the land at wishfully a lower cost. So that's not where my biggest heartache is. My biggest heartache on the lease, and the reason I'm struggling to get here, is not actually a new part of the lease, it's an old part of the lease. And that's the section of the lease that says that if the city at any point vacates the swimming pool, we have to fill the ground and bring the ground back to, back to, as though the pool was never there, at our cost. And I'm hoping there's room to make part of the lease agreement that if the school is the one to terminate the lease, that it's at their cost and not at our cost. Because if we, if the school decides they're going to terminate the lease, we have to remove the pool, fill the land, regrade it, but it's really not our choice to do that. And so I just find that particular part of the lease, I have a lot of heartburn over it. And I don't know if it was discussed at all with the school that we could find a space where if the school was the one to terminate the lease, that that would be at their cost or there would be a shared cost or some, some common ground there? Because I have, I have a lot of heartache over the idea that in 10 years, they say, lease is up, by the way, now it's going to cost you several hundred thousand dollars to remove the pool and fill the land, right? So I don't know, just.
I, I hate, I hate that provision as well, just because I'm representing the city. But I, we have similar, all of our franchisees, if they put any facilities in our ground, the second their franchise is over, they have to remove them all and return it back to normal. So it isn't not, it's, it's somewhat typical of somebody using somebody else's land in kind of a very specific way. So it isn't outrageous, except that it's pool, and the problem that we have is that they still own that land. Hopefully, future, future folks on that board might even see fit to let us purchase it, and then we'll have a, a different destiny trajectory, and I think that's, sounded like what everybody here was hopeful for.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully we just work towards that.
I mean, really, in all reality, I appreciate that the school board came to the table and we're making improvements. I just find sections of the lease very difficult for me to get, swallow. And I'm not sure how we find, you know, I know, I think it's an improved lease. I would love some actual knowledge of cost, just so that we're making an informed decision. I think signing a lease without any idea of actual costs and actual value seems kind of arbitrary, but I assign some value to the community value, so I can get there. It's the, it's the re, it's if the, if the school board ends the lease, there's a significant cost to us, and so, yeah, I'm just struggling with that.
Fair enough. Mayor? Counselor Parker?
Well, yes, this is an improvement. Thank you, Scott, and, and thank you to Superintendent Downs and to the school board. But let me also point out that this, this still runs contrary to the policy of the Canby City Council for more than a decade, that we prefer to own rather than lease. And at some point, we're going to come to the end of the lifespan of this facility, and we won't have, we'll be faced with the decision of whether we're going to build on a piece of property that we don't own, which I would not be in particular favor of. Let me also second Counselor Spoon's suggestion. We know the real cost, $20,000. It would be also good to know how much in service costs we are giving. And, and what you're talking about over 20 years, about $400,000, again, we're starting to get into the range then of, of do we want to buy some property instead to build a future aquatic center, or is this going to be a place that we can continue to provide services at? But all that being said, it's a, it's a big improvement over where we were a year ago, so thank you, Scott, thank you, Dr. Downs.
Okay, any nails?
Just, yeah, I think this is about as close as we were going to get to what we wanted. In that meeting, it was clear that they had no interest in selling it, even though we did go to bat for that. So I think this is as close as we were going to get with the, with the automatic five-year renewals. I, I also have heartburn on the replacement of the dirt, so I'm with Counselor Spoon on that, but there's, I don't think much we can do about that, if there is, please. But I think this is as good as we're going to get. So thank you for finishing that out.
Scott, did you have something else to comment?
Just another thought on the, the question about the valuation of the exchange of services. We're going to have a second reading on this. I presume we, if, if you were to do a first reading tonight, I could bring you that information before you do your second, so as a follow-up report, if you would choose to want to do that, I'd be happy to bring back a valuation for you before you did a second reading. I wanted to mention, I meant to mention, the, the school board in anticipation of its summer, annual summer recess, which I think, I think they may have had their last meeting already before they go on a summer break, already approved the lease on their side so that we could present it to you for consideration, and then not have a delay until they reconvene either at the end of the summer or beginning of the fall. So I just wanted to let you know that as well. So if, I, I guess the reason, a couple of reasons I bring that up, one, just to let you know that they already did approve it on their side, they, they give, the school board gave it their blessing, but as well as if there were any major issues to revisit, it would, it would be some time before we could probably get back to that, that level of discussion. So just want to make sure that's, that's clear.
Okay, thank you, sir. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1577, an ordinance authorizing the Canby City Administrator to amend the ground lease with Canby School District Number 86 to extend the term and create a right of first refusal to a second reading on June 29th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Council Marine to approve ordinance number 1577, an ordinance authorizing the Canby City Administrator to amend the ground lease with Canby School District Number 86 to extend the term and create a right of first refusal to a second reading on June 29th of 2022. All those, yeah, or comment, question?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for it in the first reading because I do think it's an improvement, but I would really appreciate that additional information before second reading. And then if there's any additional information or movement we can get on the, on the return to the land, the pool removal, any, yeah, I think, I think there's a pretty big difference between asking someone to remove a telephone pole and asking someone to remove a pool and the cost associated with it. So while I understand it may be a standard franchise agreement, it's not minimal in impact, so anything else we could get there before second reading would be helpful for me to swallow a second aye in a few weeks.
Okay. Council President Hensley, question?
Thank you. Scott, would that be a significant amount of conversation that would actually send it back to the school board? I'm just curious. I mean, that sounds like a pretty big piece of the lease. I'm not disagreeing with her. I absolutely feel, have the same sentiment, but I'm wondering how much of the delay that causes and what does that do to our current lease situation?
I would have to, I would visit with Dr. Downs on that. I would, I would suppose that that would probably require him to go back to his board to have some conversation, given, I think, Council President Hensley, you summed that up well, that our, our sense of what they'd be willing to do at this time and that kind of thing, I think we got kind of the best we could get right now, but I'm, I'm happy to revisit that with, with Dr. Downs. But yeah, I do, I do think that would cause us then to have to reopen that discussion to the level where they, he would probably have to take it back to his board, which would be a few months out. In the meantime, if that were the case, if, if we were not to approve this, our existing agreement would remain in place the same. So, you know, I think it would just extend out until such time that we revise the existing agreement. Joe, I don't know if you have any, if that's, correct me if I'm.
The current lease, it re-ups itself on a year-by-year basis, so if we don't amend it, it just goes back to what the current, the current ground lease is.
Well, I would still agree that maybe reach out and have that conversation with Dr. Downs. If you get the idea that maybe he's willing to do that and go to the board, then we can discuss at the next meeting, but he might give you the no right then, we don't know. It's worth the ask.
Will do. Afraid to hear no, don't ask.
Sorry.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if I could get a point of clarification on that, Joe, if it rolls over and we don't approve this, it'll be, will it be for a whole nother year, or will it just, or can we just take it up later?
The law answer is always that depends, right? So if, if we get to yes and we have other amendments and they vote on it and you guys vote on it, then we, whatever the new amendment says, if it's a different date, which we might then choose, you know, a few months in, or they might say, oh, wait till, you know, we don't want to deal with that right now, and it might take that whole year. But I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion is presented?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that one carries five zero. Next agenda item is considering ordinance number 1578, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Troop for a classification, compensation, and pay equity study. Mr. Archer?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to call on Melissa Bissett, who is our city recorder and human resources director, which falls under the human resources director part of her title, to give you this report.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor and members of the council, I am excited to present this item to you. We have talked about doing a class and comp study now for a little over a year, had put it in the budget last year. Um, had put it in the budget last year, actually, and it is, we weren't able to get it done in time, so it is in this coming year's budget. And this study will, um, help us get our classification and compensation and pay equity, all in check, make sure that we are doing things, we are legally compliant with Oregon pay equity laws, and that we are having a very fair way of handling our classifications and pay structure and for all of our city positions. The hope is that this will, um, help us be a competitive employer, that will attract and retain qualified employees, and, um, that we will be comparable with other, you know, government organizations. Also, in our collective bargaining agreement with AFSC, we promised them that we would do this, so it fulfills that obligation as well. Um, we did do an RFP for this. We received, um, four, uh, proposals for it. We actually received five, but one was late, so we just looked at the four. Uh, we had a interview panel, or a panel that reviewed all of our applications, and, um, Troop was the one that seemed to be the most qualified. Um, they've done several studies for local organizations, like the city of Beaverton and sort of Hellsborough, so I think that they'll be a great vendor to work with.
Great. Thank you. Questions for staff on this? Counselor Spoon?
Um, I just want to thank you. I'm really excited that we're finally doing this, um, particularly giving a mind to pay equity. So thank you for your work on this. Um, normally, or sometimes, I guess, I would say, there has been occasions we haven't, we get to see what the other are, what the other proposals came in at, and I don't see that in the packet. Um, so I'm wondering, I guess it would just be nice to know how they compared and priced to the other.
Sure. I can, uh, forward that adoration along to the council.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1578, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Troop for close, classification, compensation, and pay equity study to a second reading on June 29th, 2022.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Spoon to approve ordinance number 1578, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Troop for a classification, compensation, and pay equity study to a second reading on June 29th of 2022. Question?
Yeah, a quick question, just for clarification in our packet. It says ordinance 1579. Is it 1578 or 1579?
It's 1579. The script is incorrect, thank you. It's 1579.
No, it's 1578.
That's right. Oh, oh, you're right. It is 1579.
Okay. In the, on the proposed motion, it says 1579.
There was a typo somewhere. We were, I said it right the first time.
Perfect. All right. Just wanted to clarify since I was looking at a different number. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries 5-0. Uh, next ordinance is number 1579, uh, an ordinance authorizing the Canby City Administrator to expend payment to city counts, city county insurance services, otherwise CIS, in an amount to not exceed $450,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2022, 23, and declaring an emergency for first reading.
And, Mr. Mayor, I can take this. So, you know, we've been, uh, insured by the city county, uh, insurance services for our liability insurance all along. Um, we recently, uh, last year, they stopped doing the, and I'm kind of answering the next ordinance too. They stopped doing the, uh, workers' comp portion of that. So this cost is everything except the workers' comp portion of that. But what happens is, they want to know, at the end of our fiscal year, what our expenses were from the last year and how many hours we have for, uh, the workers' comp, let's know how many hours of, of work we did, you know, to, to, for, uh, setting our rates. These guys want to know what our properties are, what the property values are, you know, what our equipment is, uh, you know, there's a certain valuation to our weapons and our radios and our, you know, all that sort of thing that they insure. And then, we even have a couple of bridges, and we have all these things that we insure through this. And so this is for all the liability minus the workers' comp. And, uh, what they couldn't do is, uh, we were waiting on some of our fleet vehicles to, to be double-checked, and all of this stuff kind of comes in time, and they don't even know what their rates are going to be until this month. But then they want paid because they're an insurance provider, and they want paid upfront. And we get a, we get, uh, some cost savings if we pay, you know, in one lump sum, and it comes due, and it occurred to us that, because this is kind of a new look for some of you who've been here for a while, that this is yet another expenditure, and we have an ordinance, uh, clause in our miscellaneous section of our charter that says over $50,000 expenditure better come in front of you. And so we want to do best practices, and so we bring this for you. The emergency clause is because we're bringing it now. We know that there's going to be a s, uh, special meeting on the 29th. We'll ask for second reading there, and then that way we'll make the cut so that we can actually pay these guys beyond time or early and be able to, uh, you know, get those savings and, and continue to be insured.
Thank you once again for reading Counselor Hensley's mind on the emergency clause. Great. Any other questions for Joe on this one? No?
I've been asking the same question for a decade, so they got it now.
All right, we'll take a motion, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1579, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to ex, expend payment to city county insurance services, CIS, in the amount not to exceed $450,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and declaring emergency to a second reading, June 27th, uh, 29th, 2022.
One second.
Uh, motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Varwig to approve ordinance number 1579, an ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expend payment to city county insurance services, CIS, in an amount not to exceed $450,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2022 and 23, and declaring an emergency, um, to a second reading on June 29th of 2022. Any other conversation or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries 5-0. Uh, consider, uh, next item is ordinance number 1580, an ordinance authorizing the Canby City Administrator to expend payment to Safe Corporation in the amount of $85,703.62 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 2022 and 23, and declaring an emergency. Joe? And, uh, similar explanation here. Uh, this covers, instead of our buildings and our, all of our stuff and our activities, this covers our, uh, workers, and then it also covers you guys and our board members and our volunteers. Uh, and so, uh, and this is the, the way in which, um, we had to go after CIS decided not to, uh, be in the game of workers' comp anymore. So, uh, this was a transition we did last year, and, um, this is for first reading to come up with the emergency because, again, they would like to get paid. I believe they allowed an extension up to July 10th. So they want paid right away if we get this price and if we want to retain our coverage.
Do we get, uh, cost savings for paying annually?
We get a cost savings for a couple of different, uh, pieces of this. Um, I believe, system-wide, we got some cost savings because last year was a good year. So, yeah, they, there was kind of a list of some of our savings, and, um, so it, it does help to make sure that we're paying on time and paying ahead. And it, obviously, we do essential work with these workers, and so, for the safety and welfare of our community, we want to make sure they're insured. They do high liability stuff. Our, our essential people do the highest liability stuff, like our police and our, our, uh, workers that work with our sewer and such.
Any other questions on this one for staff? Okay. I'll take a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1580, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expend payment to Safe Corporation in the amount of $85,703.62 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and declaring an emergency to second reading on June 29th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Marine to approve ordinance number 1580, an ordinance authorizing the Canby City Administrator to expend payment to Safe Corporation in the amount of $85,703.62 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 2022, 23, and declaring an emergency up for second reading on June 29th of 2022. Uh, any further discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 5-0. Um, we are at the halfway point of, we just finished item number six of 12. Is everyone good? Do we want to take a quick break? Or power through? Okay. I'm hearing power through. We will power through. To my mom and dad who sat in the audience, it's good to see you. I'll see you tomorrow. So next up is resolution number 1366, a resolution adopting budget appropriation transfers for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, this is for the adoption of budget appropriation transfer for, uh, FY 2022. To maintain compliance with budget law and appropriation transfer resolution must be adopted to allow for the increase and decrease in expenditure appropriations during, between departments. Uh, so here's the summary of what was going on. In FY 22, the adopted budget, uh, the court department had a total expenditure of $521,774 adopted, and the finance department had expenditures of $632,756 adopted. In resolution 1351, which was last year's budget adoption, these amounts were actually transposed on the sheet. So this supplemental budget just, uh, swaps the transposition. So there's no difference in any, um, expenditures. Uh, the, the police department requires additional appropriation to cover expenditure increases in personnel services, mainly in taxes and the purse contributions and capital outlays due to vehicles. The parks department requires additional appropriation to cover expenditure increases at the Maple Park Sports Court. All of, all of the above additions are covered by a reduction in the general fund contingency. Facilities Fund needs additional appropriations to cover expenditure increases in building repairs and maintenance due to the COVID mitigation projects. These additions are also covered by, uh, the Facilities Fund contingency line. The sewer wastewater treatment department requires an increase in appropriations for capital projects. There have been more expenditures than anticipated in vehicles and equipment improvements and the new primary clarifier and support systems expenditure lines. The sewer not allocated department requires an increase in appropriations in the sewer billing expenditure line. These additions will be offset, again, by the contingency fund. Um, the fiscal impact is none. The spending authority is being transferred between appropriations with no increase in total appropriations. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution, and then the resolution itself has all the detail, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, sir. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah. Just a point of, um, clarification. I think that the resolution has a typo. Under police, it actually comes to 66,320, and I assume the second six needs to be removed. So we should probably adopt it as amended. The first number, it says 6,6320,746. Am I the only one that's?
Oh, yeah. No, you're right.
Yeah. So just one of those sixes needs to be removed, so we can adopt it as amended.
Yes, it should be 6,32746.
Thank you. Thank you for that catch. Any other questions? Comments for Eric on this one? Okay.
Motion.
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution 1366, a resolution adopting budget appropriation transfers for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year as amended.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Counselor Spoon and seconded by Counselor Marine to adopt resolution number 1366, a resolution adopting budget appropriation transfers for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year as.
2022, 23.
No. It transfers for 21.
Oh, transfers.
Yeah. We're closing out 21.
Oh, sorry.
For 2021, 22 fiscal year as amended. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries 5-0. Uh, next item is resolution 1367, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue for fiscal year 2022, 23. We had an earlier hearing on this.
Yes, we want their money.
I guess if there'll be any question or comment, if not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, um, adopt resolution number 1367, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Varwig to approve resolution number 1367, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue funds for FY 23. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0. Uh, next up is resolution number 1368, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, and imposing and categorizing taxes for the 2022, 23 fiscal year. I don't think there's much to be added to that, is there, Eric?
No. I just wanted to thank the staff and the previous finance team's documents again.
Perfect.
Uh, all the details for the appropriations are on the last page of the resolution.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll take a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 1368, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, and imposing and categorizing taxes for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Spoon and seconded by Counselor Marine to approve, oh, 1368, uh, resolution of the city of Canby, uh, adopting the annual budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for the fiscal year of 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1. Um, item J, uh, is resolution item number, um, 1369, a resolution authorizing an internal loan from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to the Library Fund in the amount of $500,000, and authorizing repayment of the interfund loan in fiscal year 2022, 23. Scott, do you want to expand on that one for us?
The library fund.
Sorry, thanks, Eric.
Sorry.
We'll just let Eric continue on.
Yes, no, sorry, yes, go ahead, Eric.
The library fund has used the majority of their reserve balances and will not receive a bulk of their annual, annual revenue until January of '23. Oregon budget law does not allow a fund to run a deficit balance. Therefore, an interfund loan is needed. The interfund loan will be repaid in FY 2023 with interest, and staff recommends that council adopt the resolution.
Great. Thank you. Questions or comments for?
No, we do this every year, right?
This is, yeah, this has been kind of an every, switching gears from funds being moved over, but yeah, this is just a temporary loan piece for the library.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 1369, a resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to the Library Fund in the amount of $500,000, and authorizing repayment of the interfund loan in the fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Uh, motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Varwig to adopt resolution number 1369, a resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to the Library Fund in the amount of $500,000, and authorizing repayment of the interloan, or interfund loan in fiscal year 2023. Any other discussion or comments? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 5-0. Uh, next up, item K is resolution number 1370, a resolution setting fees for services and repealing resolution 1354 and all previous resolutions adopting a master fee schedule. Just had our public hearing on that earlier. Any other questions or clarifications? No? Uh, motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I move to adopt resolution thirteen seventy, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camby, Oregon, setting fees for services and reporting resolution and repealing resolution thirteen fifty-four.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion has been made by Council, uh, Counselor Marine and seconded by Counselor Spoon uh, to approve or adopt resolution number one, three, seven, zero, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camby, Oregon, setting fees for services and repealing resolution one, three, five, four. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
That carries four, one. Um, item L, uh, resolution number one, three, seven, one, a resolution extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Camby and repealing resolution number one, three, five, five. Again, this is a yearly um piece that we take care of and update that provides insurance and um compensation or coverage for volunteers that help in the city, so.
And the, the other thing is, it's so it enumerates specific events. So if we ever add an event, because it, it'll highlight, you know, we're planning on doing July fourth, so we'll have. It's just to really let our insurance company know what, what events we're going to be doing. If we ever add an event, I know one time we tried to add an Earth Day event one year. I call them up and make sure it gets added. So it isn't locked in as much as just what they like to have us say in advance of what we're doing, so I don't have to call them up on everything. So this is the lion's share of what we do. If we end up doing other things, I'll make sure that we're covered for those events.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve of resolution one, three, seven, one, a resolution extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Camby and repealing resolution number one, three, five, five.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Varwig to approve resolution number one, three, seven, one. A resolution extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Camby and repealing resolution one, three, five, five. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries five to zero. That concludes uh ordinances and resolutions. Thank goodness. Thank you all. Uh, next item on the agenda is a discussion about city council meeting start times. Um, the council that had proposed that was Counselor Bangs and he's not here this evening, so if uh, at the pleasure of the council, if they wouldn't mind if we held that over to a meeting that he would be here to have, bring that forward and have that conversation?
Absolutely.
Is that, head, head nod?
Yes. Just as a note, though, originally our June twenty-ninth meeting was going to be a short, so quick, we, no one barely needed to be there meeting, and it's quickly not becoming that. Um, and I'm wondering if we could revisit having the first meeting in July instead of making that one particularly long? Because when we agreed to do that meeting, I thought it was under different terms and I.
Well, I don't really want to do two back to back, do we?
No, no, she's suggesting.
Instead of the twenty-ninth, can we rehab the first Wednesday?
Well, then we, we can't because FOB.
I, I unders- I understand that we need to address that. I'm just saying, instead of having, it's quickly becoming a very extended meeting. All of these first readings have to come back, are coming back in that meeting. And it's not becoming the short meeting that I thought we agreed to. I would have had, uh, when we agreed to cancel the first meeting in July, it was because we didn't have much to do and I.
Sorry to interrupt. I, uh, so all of these ordinances have baked into it to come up for second reading in them. So the language of the ordinance as past first reading all says to come up for the twenty-ninth, so we can't put, plus, most of them we wanted to come up as a emergency on that twenty-ninth. Does that make sense?
Yes, then my piece will be next time we cancel a meeting, if we have things that need to come up on the meeting, maybe that could be part of the conversation instead of, because I feel like we canceled it on the terms that there was nothing to be done and it's quickly not becoming that way.
Yeah. Can I add a little bit? I think this might shed a little bit more light and I, I hear you, Counselor Spoon. What actually, where this started was um after our um following that discussion, which um also was, we, we, we had the, this, sorry, I'm just putting this thought together, I apologize, but there's an urban renewal agency uh meeting that we asked for an emergency meeting on that same date. That one we need to do before the end of the fiscal year, so before June thirty, because as we did earlier tonight, the Urban New Budget Committee met to essentially reapprove its budget. We have to do a notice period, but we need to adopt that before the end of June, so. Um, I believe where this started was we were asking to schedule a probably a fairly quick urban renewal agency meeting for you to adopt your urban renewal budget for next year and then there were a couple of issues that came up with some timing of, I think, some board appointments before July one, uh, and a couple of other things. So the mayor and I were talking and, and then it sort of progressed into do we just have a quicker renewal meeting and have what we thought might be a fairly quick council meeting, but you're right, it does seem that things continue to kind of keep adding. So we I think at the time we discussed the cancellation of the first July meeting, we didn't have as much of this information, didn't realize there were as many issues, so yeah, I understand. We would inform better if we, if we had known that, yeah.
And I, I guess I would, I would, I would have planned my month differently if I anticipated that we were having a meeting that night that was full of important decisions. So that's my burn on.
Understand.
No, noted. Thank you. So anyways, I'm just back to.
I think we agreed we didn't.
Do we?
Did we bump it to the twenty-ninth or bump it into the July meeting? No, we're on the July.
Well, and I, and I, and I'm not sure, um, I don't believe Counselor Bangs is going to be here for the twenty-ninth either, so it would bump it into the second meeting in July, so this would not be an item on the twenty-ninth agenda uh if that were the case. So, okay, we will bump that for now and bring it up at a later date. Um, new business, the straight ma- street maintenance fee update. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, so um this really is uh essentially a, a discussion item, wanted to get your um counsel, uh, your take or, or a sense of direction. Um, so we've been talking about our street maintenance fee and wanting to visit um what whether we want to um amend that, that fee. Um, we most recently had a, a council, you had a work session on April twentieth of this year. Um, staff presented um uh quite a bit of information, but there were, there were a lot of questions that came out of that from council, a lot of um follow-up items for uh staff to continue to work on. In our follow-up efforts, um, what I think what became more apparent or I, I was more enlightened on uh understanding the history of how the recommendation for that fee was in ori- was originally developed, so it um the fee was implemented by council in two thousand and eight, but prior to that, a cup- about a couple of years prior to that or so, there was um a special committee that was formed that was comprised of um kind of a cross-representation of people from the community. Uh, residents, I think at large, uh, some business representatives. Um, uh, perhaps the, I think, the Chamber of Commerce Director. Um, one or two council um representatives and uh some staff, and so that committee actually made the recommendation to form this fee. I think essentially the council adopted pretty close to what was recommended, as I understand it, so I, as I've gained further insight into this, um, it occurred to me uh, and the mayor and I had this conversation about uh with regard to the agenda and suggested that we, we might want to just bring this up tonight, that um one of the considerations might be that um, the possibility of, should we consider reconvening a similar group? I don't know that all the people that were involved previously would still be um available or still in the community, but something close to that, um, certainly not to the um extent of detail or to the, to the length of time that it took to do this, but uh, it, because staff has already done a lot of the um legwork on pulling information and, and we're we're kind of at the point of having some refined information, but um I guess the question I'm posing is council, would, would you be interested in having this committee reconvene? Um, having a set time that they would bring back a, a recommendation to help support this idea of since, in the spirit of, since the, the committee was the originator of the recommendation, would it make sense that a, that a similar committee would revise a recommendation for this um and bring that back to you and perhaps help with some of the community input part of this? I, I think maybe um allaying some of the concerns of the community that might be out there and.
I don't.
There's no.
No, that's, yeah, yeah, Mr. Patton is, was involved with that. Um, so that's really the question is, would you uh, would you like to consider this idea of, of reconvening a, a, the committee in something that's similar to its uh prior makeup? Um, putting it as a, a time certain where they would bring you a recommendation to consider and, and then I think helping you move forward in a decision about what to do with the street fee. Um, if you would like to do that, we can, we can work to make that happen as quickly as possible. If, if you're not interested in that, staff will stay on the same course. We're working on refining the information based on our prior conversations and working that into our um upcoming meeting schedule. Um, as soon as we would be able to get that back to you, but I, I think it was an idea that just kind of came out of some conversations that I have with staff and some community members and some people that were involved in this before, and it just seemed to be kind of an idea that hadn't occurred to me before.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that forward. Um. Council, thoughts on staff going that direction again of pulling together a cross-section committee kind of thing? Yay, nay? Art, go ahead.
All right, yeah, I think it's a good idea to get some more community feedback on it. Um. It's rare that the community is going to come to talk to us here, so unless it's FOB. But in this case, I think it would be a good idea to put together a committee and, and discuss that further.
Well. Counselor Marine, I think that that you would find that when we bring up street maintenance fee, um, that very well could turn, um. We could have another full chamber uh for that, when that conversation comes about, but um, no, I agree with the concept of, of revisiting that, that committee piece uh as well. Um, yeah, Counselor Spoon?
Um, I am always interested in community input. Is it something? I mean, like, I guess my thought is I wish if we could go back in time, if we had a magic ball, if we could have started that when we started on the street maintenance process, so my question, the fee process and revisiting it and all the staff work that's put into it already. How much time do it, what do you anticipate the timeline would be if we went? Not that, I mean, I always want community input. I think we'll get community input either way. Um, however, if it, if, if it does not extend us getting to a conclusion on the street maintenance fee by an inordinate amount of time, I'm all for it. Um, I just feel like we've, we've already delayed it like two years. At some point, we have to come to a conclusion. So I guess the answer I want is, yes, we can do this and it won't delay us too much longer. And I'm, I'm hoping that's the answer you're going to give me. No pressure.
Sure. Um, well, I, I don't think there's um an exact timeline in mind other than we would want to, I think, we would want to s- uh, set a date, a date certain to say we would want a recommendation by not later than X time. What? So one of the um realities that we're looking at here, well, let me back up just a half step. First of all, I want to acknowledge your point about the staff work that's already been done. That would be folded in and the committee would essentially be, well, the staff would be working with them similar that, that we've been working on this, so I think that would expedite that process and, yeah, we wouldn't lose the work that we've already put into this so far. I, I, I think um at this point, we've just, uh, you just adopted your, your uh change in fees for uh the next fiscal year. Um, really, I think at this point, we're, we're likely into the next fiscal cycle to update a fee, so um, I could, I could, I could see something where you, you know, by the fall or by the end of the calendar year, you receive a recommendation. Make some decisions around that, give staff direction to implement the fee by X date, whether that be the next fiscal year, or we can update uh and amend fees during the fiscal year as well. There are processes to do that, but that might be the kind of, what I would see as um a, a likely scenario. Um, the challenge is we're, we're heading into the summer season and it's probably a little bit tough to get a committee to convene and work effectively, um, but perhaps, you know, uh, two or three meetings in the fall and they bring you a recommendation. It might be what I would just quickly put together in my mind.
Brian?
Counselor Parker, I thought you would have something to say on this one?
Well, I'm, I want to keep my fees straight. No, it's the um, the park maintenance fee which is, is set to expire. And um, the street maintenance fee is a permanent one. Uh, the debate we were having is whether to index it. Do I have that right?
Yeah, we were having a conversation about, yeah, are we looking at it, uh, an increase, a, a bigger increase than usual and then indexing it um, going forward? And so I think that the conversation that going, when Scott went back and looked at the previous street maintenance fee committee was reinstituting that for this particular conversation in terms of present the information, a recommendation of what that initial new increase would be and then indexing from that point.
All right, well, I, I'm, I'm fine with uh having a, a public input on it with the street maintenance fee. The, the park maintenance fee I see is a bit more urgent uh that we need to get to because really we can't have a roadmap for our uh master plan on parks and what parks are going to build if we don't know how much money we're going to be spending on maintenance. But in this case, uh, we've already approved uh fees. Um, the staff knows for the next year what their resources are going to be. The idea is whether we're going to be improving it. Um, I'd be interested in um Citizen Patton's opinion since uh he, he's been the one who's been pushing for indexing. That's one. Two, the other thing that we did talk about, Scott, and that was um having some sort of equity review uh over businesses, uh, businesses with lots of employees and that sort of thing. So uh, I, I do want us to be able to have that informed discussion when it does come back to us on whether uh we've got the right formula uh for some of these large businesses coming in, uh, on whether we're getting the appropriate amount of street maintenance fee.
And, and on that point, uh, Counselor Parker, yes, um, we, that's precisely what we would do is staff would. Um, we've, we've got all of your prior discussion and feedback uh from work sessions and we would, we would uh incorporate that into the conversation with, with this committee. Precisely, yeah.
Jason, did you want to make a, a comment or what your thoughts are, seeing as that you were one of those original committee members?
Do you want me to?
I, I would like to know your, your input on it.
Okay.
The question handed, should we reconvene the, the committee, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, should it be a reconvening of the committee?
So uh, I had this conversation with uh, with Scott and um Jerry. Um, I'm kind of torn about all of this. If we go into the wayback, wayback machine, when this whole street maintenance thing was created, I was one of the loudest proponents of saying that there should be a perpetual committee to review this on an annual basis or on a biannual basis, and that was discarded from the original plan.
Interesting.
So technically, if people had listened to me way back then, uh, you would already have this committee, it would already be in, in, you know, in doing its job and monitoring how the fee is spent, how it's tracking, do changes need to be made? You know, am I bitter? Maybe a little. Um, another part of me says, you folks are the ruling body on this, so therefore you know, own up and make the change. Um, my fear as a proponent of this is that there, there's the discussion about upping the fee by like two dollars and some odd cents a month all in one shot. And like some members of council and some members of the community, I worry that that will spur folks, that will agitate folks enough to try and bring this to a referendum and a vote. And while I appreciate the argument about whether this is a tax or a fee, I would say that those people who want it to become to a vote do not have any sort of major plan to figure out that if this fee is no longer charged, where that, where those millions of dollars are going to come from. So it's all well and good to say that we should take this to a vote of the people, but if the money goes away, they're going to want their roads fixed still and there's not going to be any money to do that. Um, one of the things that I have. One of the things that I have sort of crunched the numbers on in, in, in my conversation with Scott was sort of amortizing the blow. So the way I had kind of calculated it was if you do a 14% increase over the course of four years, the monthly fee bump would be less than a dollar. It'd be like between 60 and 70 some cents a month. That would include an annual fee increase of about 3% plus after the four years, you would essentially make up what you, you'd, you'd make up your $2 and some odd cents, capture a 3% increase each year, and then in the fifth year, the fee would be indexed to inflation or whatever, 3%, 2%, whatever your mechanism would be. If I was, if the committee was convening today and I was allowed to say what I, what my recommendation would be, that's what would, that's what my, my, my recommendation would be. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy if the committee gets together. I think that it should be reinstated regardless. I think that it should be something that, that, a, a group that meets annually or biannually to review this process and, and serve as your sounding board for it. And I dare say, when I was sitting back there and thinking about it, if, if, if you, if you add in the parks maintenance fee as well as part of that discussion, I think it would make sense to, to just have this be like a citizen fee board. And any of those sort of fees are reviewed by them and, and, and go from there. Because I know there's some tension about, you know, whether this is a political matter and, you know, people taking a political hit or something. And that's, I completely understand that. But yeah, that, that's sort of my two cents on that. I don't know if you had any questions?
Nope, you got to the answer that I, to my question, so thank you.
Multiple answers.
Questions I, questions I didn't even necessarily know I needed to ask, so thank you. So with feedback from Citizen Patton, I mean, what say, I mean, I think maybe do we send Scott and staff back maybe to bring back, you know, timelines, who would be involved? I mean, I, we got a general sense of it, but, you know, and how about we, how we go about getting the committees, committee going? And do we kind of not oppose the idea of having a, a committee that maybe addresses fees and things maybe as a, you know? Another advisory board, bi, bi, biannual, biennial meetings, you know, that kind of thing. So all good ideas. Counselor Spoon?
Regardless of whether or not we use a committee for this initial adjustment in the street maintenance fee, I would certainly support having a committee in perpetuity to do a review and a recommendation on our fee schedule in general, right? If we do move forward with the committee at this time, I want to make sure it's really balanced and has a broad representation of all people impacted. And so I don't know how we determine who that is and make it equitable, but it's really important, I think, that we have an equitable committee appointed to it.
But so seems like, yes, bring back more information, not at the June 29th meeting.
Correct.
Counselor Parker?
Understood. We'll bring, we'll put something together and bring that back at the, probably the meeting after the, till June 29th, the next one after that.
Perfect.
And I appreciate your support of that, that idea. And, and yeah, I apologize that that idea didn't come to mind sooner in the process, but it, it, when it did, it became pretty obvious to me that that might be a consideration we'd want to make. So thank you.
You got it. Moving into mayor's business, I will be quick. Counsel, there was a doodle poll sent out by our city recorder about doing a, a meeting as asked for about doing kind of prioritizing work sessions and stuff from our goal, goal meeting and whatnot. So some have answered it, some haven't. So if you could go in and, there were, I think, four dates, Melissa, that you threw in there? Four or five? Yeah. So if you would go back in there and double check, you know, if you've done it, great. If not, please, when you can. Yes, Counselor Spoon?
I answered the doodle poll, but all the dates were in the same week. Is it possible that we could spread? It was all one week's dates, wasn't it?
No, it was.
It was like over a couple of months.
It was four dates over a couple, July and August.
Oh. Did I answer the, what? I do doodle polls all the time, but I swear it only gave me the week of July 10th.
It's a, it's a new format.
You have to answer for each date.
Right, but the only dates it showed me was that one week. And I was like, that, I'm gone that week. I would do it almost any other week. Is it possible for me to go back in and, okay?
Yeah.
I do doodle polls all the time. I found that very odd. Okay, well, that answers my question.
Groovy. So they had the Park Master Plan public meeting last, last week? And so it was usual turnout, I think, you know, I think there was about 15 citizens there, 12 to 15. Very good conversation, some input on just, one of the big takeaways, just to keep this portion brief, was that the, those citizens in attendance were in fact open to if the plan was right and the price is right of doing, sort of supporting and voting for some sort of a, a park bond or levy, which was great to hear, but was surprised to hear that. But so that was one of the bigger nuggets. The Parks Board meets next week for their meeting. Question of the council, I know that in the charter, it talks about boards and committees meeting here in City Hall when possible. The Park Advisory Board would, would like to move their meetings to Public Works because they've got the same, you know, ability to record and ADA access and meet all the requirements. They just want to be able to have access to maps and some of the GIS data that they have access to there that they don't have here at City Hall. But they asked that I, I bring that back to the council to see if that's, if there's any heartburn over them moving down there? Okay. Counselor Spoon?
No heartburn over them moving there. I think it's important that the meetings stay on city property though. So I know in the past, they've had meetings at other government agencies, I think. As long as they stay here, I don't care where in the city they meet, as long as we can record.
Okay, yeah, they did have one at Cambie Fire and, and so I will let them know. So thank you, I appreciate that. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, upcoming meeting is beginning next month, but one of the things we're trying to get there is Organ Transportation Committee Chair. So basically, OTC oversees ODOT and basically carries out a lot of the policy and whatnot for the legislature in ODOT. And we're trying to get Chairman Brockland to come and have a, a very thoughtful and honest dialogue around tolling. As we had presented to us, it seems like we have sent a number of letters to the OTC as a coordinating committee for Clackamas County. We had ODOT staff answer one of our letters and that wasn't what the intent, it was for Chairman Brockland to answer. And then the second letter went unanswered. So, and what we're finding is that there, though there is a lot of conversation around the diversion angle, is that the diversion piece is not of major consequence to OTC because travel patterns, change in travel patterns are temporary by those standards. And they find that though they may change temporarily to avoid tolling, that they will return to their normal patterns later on. So there's not, so that, that was one of the heartburn issues that mayors here in Clackamas County are having. And again, still the big piece is that the whole system's not being told. And so the brunt of the tolling is on Clackamas County when this could be a, a system-wide piece that's going to get adopted. So more to come on that. In my last piece, I will give a plug for the Allegro Dance Studio recital that is this weekend. So you want good entertainment and to see my, my child and Counselor Varwick's child dance in their splendid outfits?
Six different ones.
Six, only six? Wow, minor. They, they will do that for this, but the eighth graders do it, so. Yes, I've done that. Counselor Dale's done that, I think. Didn't you do that as well, Counselor Parker? Yes. So Counselor Varwick will get that opportunity in the next couple of years. So I'll make that plug. And that's all that I've got. Counselor Spoon, any counsel, liaison reports or comments?
Just two quick things. Bridging Cultures is this Saturday, this time. It's 11:30 to 1:30 this week. It's at Maple Street Park. They're going to have COVID vaccines, food, music, resources, masks available. So a general community resource and a great opportunity to break bread with your neighbors. And then also I wanted to revisit, I asked a couple of weeks ago, couple of meetings ago, I guess, for an update on where we are with the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Strategic Plan, getting an RFP for it. At the time, you had said that you and Scott were working with the county. So I'm wondering if we made any progress there. But regardless, I've given it considerable thought and talked, talked to Scott a little bit about it. I think that it's, it's important that Cambie have our own DEI plan. And I think we can see that in the Parks Master Plan calls out that we need to start considering equity in our plan, in our park development. We're talking about pay equity in terms of hiring. And then there was something else that was on my mind where equity and diversity came up. Oh, our boards and commissions, just generally, we need our own plan and I don't want to rely on a county plan that may not be entirely focused on us. So my hope is that we can get a consensus that we would like staff to do an RFP for a DA plan or bring it back to us at the next, not June 29th meeting, but the next July meeting, to have some discourse over that. It's been, I mean, I've been, I've been working on this for a couple of years now and I feel like it's time that we actually move forward because I've been asking for it for two years and we never really get past this point. So my ask is that at the July meeting, we have some conversation about moving forward with a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion RFP for a strategic plan. And if, if there's enough people in council that can get behind that, I think it's time we do that after two years of requesting it.
Okay. Work with Scott on that one, getting, as a discussion piece.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, Counselor Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item, and that is that the Traffic Safety Commission will be returning to Public Works for their meetings. They'll remain on the same day of the month as always, but we were down there for many years and then we moved here and they wanted to move back for the same reasons. They don't have a location requirement in their, in their papers, but the parks do. So do we have to do a resolution to change that for them?
No, if it's not in there, other places have said, you know, at a, at a meeting place, or, or if it's not specifically enumerated, then.
I believe it is in the Parks Board though. It, it does have a meeting location requirement in their, in their paper. So I'm wondering if we have to do a resolution at the July meeting to be able to let them change?
Oh, you mean the parks?
The Parks Advisory Committee has.
Because it says City Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, you can.
So I'm wondering if that needs to be changed by resolution rather than just giving them a yes blessing? Because it is formalized in paperwork. It seems like it might have to be formalized to change.
I think it's in there.
That's why.
If it's in an ordinance, we actually need to amend an ordinance.
Yeah.
It's, sorry to.
Yeah.
Take five extra seconds.
So, yeah. I mean, that, that, that language is not in the founding documents or whatever of the, of the TSC, but it is in the parks. So they, we're just, I'm just announcing, they are returning to Public Works. But yes, if we could get an ordinance in the July meeting. Or for the change of venue for parks, that'd be great. And that's all I have.
I, I, I will gladly make sure that happens.
Great. Counselor Parker?
Thank you. Keeping it short, July 2nd, the Fire District will be having a open house at the Northside Fire Station. We have a time for that now. It is 10 to 12 on July 2nd. That's a Saturday. So please be sure to go check that out. And then Scott, I don't know if you'll be talking about the new agreement with Lament Falls in your thing, so I will just leave that alone and let you talk about that.
Okay, yeah, unless, unless you wanted to, but yeah, I was planning to do so.
I'll let you do it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Counselor Marine?
Well, I had the pleasure of going to the Cambie Utility Board meeting yesterday and they addressed some things that have actually been a concern to me. So I was glad to see that they're recognizing the issues. One is water quality in the summer. Has anybody ever noticed that the, there's some smell and? So they're starting a sampling program to try to identify the source of the algae that's causing that. Not that they necessarily can fix it, but if they can identify where it's coming from, then at least they'll have a strategy. They are purchasing new software for their, their systems and they're in the process of evaluating choices there. The financially, they're doing really well. They've got good reserves and things are going well enough that they're not going to have a rate increase this year. So that's encouraging. And they're going to move away from contractors for doing tree trimming services. They're going to move that all in-house. And I understand they borrow some of the city equipment sometimes to do that, so that'll be coming up. That's it.
I think we have an opportunity maybe to leverage equipment for undergrounding some power lines, I think, maybe. Just throwing out an idea there. Thank you, Art, appreciate you going. Perfect. Counselor Parker?
I'm afraid I'm having a bad influence on you, Brian. Scott, I'm assuming you're going to talk about the pickleball courts tomorrow?
Yes, unless, unless you want to. Yes, well, well, yes, we will.
I'll, I'll be down there with my brand new paddles. I don't know how to use them, but I'll be there. And yeah, a second to Counselor Spoon's comments. We, we do need a customized diversity plan. Cambie has some unique demographics and some unique challenges. And I was pleased to see the Parks Consultants bring that up. And finally, in terms of our audience tonight, Mr. Mayor, was, was that the first time your folks have been able to join us in person?
That, that is correct. They usually, they occasionally will catch a, a previous episode on YouTube or off the city website, or, and then they wait with bated breath on the, you know, Malala Herald paper to see if there's anything, you know, on the Cambie City Council happenings. So, but yes, they were, they are in town for the recital that Allegro is putting on to see my daughter perform and their granddaughter. And so they wanted to come see a city council meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm thrilled that they were able to attend. I know they've had obligations in the past that have kept them from being here, but it was, it was exciting to see them in the audience. So that's all I have tonight.
Perfect. Thank you all. City Administrator Business and Staff Reports, Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to call on Melissa to give you some information about the November 8th election.
Okay, as you know, terms of the office for Mayor Brian Hodson, Counselor Art Marine, Counselor Greg Parker and Counselor Sean Varwick will expire on December 31st, 2022. So these positions will be on the November 8th, 2022 general election and ballot. If you would like to file, please come see me. It is time to file. The filing period is now open. You have through August 25th, 2022 to file. But there is quite a process involved with this and you have to get 50 signatures. So it's better to start now if you're able to, so you have time to gather that, the signatures and Clackamas County has time to verify your signatures. So please reach out to me.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Next, just a quick update, the Quiet Zone Project, the work is done. We finally got enough of a break and some rain and weather to get the striping done, which we had been trying to get to for a while. As far as it is, is not in place yet in terms of the, the sign-off has to happen. We have a meeting in a few days actually with ODOT to get their approval. And then in mid-June, we have a meeting with Union Pacific Railroad, which will be the final, the final sign-off. So hopefully everything will, will meet the requirements. So hopefully everything will, will meet the requirements needed and, and those agencies will sign off. And then we will be able to announce that the Quiet Zone is actually in effect. Pickleball Court dedication, so Maple Street Park. Tomorrow at 4:00 PM at Maple Street Park, we will be dedicating our new pickleball courts. These are, this is a really nice amenity to our, for our community, a really nice addition to that park. The mayor's going to speak. Our Park Board Chair, Barry Johnson, I believe, is going to speak. And then one of the, one of the major donors to that project will, I think, be, be speaking as well. And there'll be, there'll be some demonstration and we'll have some refreshment. So everybody is invited to attend that, that dedication of the pickleball courts. 4:00 PM, Thursday, Maple Street Park. Excuse me, the CTV 5, Council of Varwick, you mentioned this. And yes, I did have this on my notes to, to mention. So I've been keeping you apprised, counsel, but this really is the first public announcement of this, that we are effective July 1 going to be transitioning our television broadcasting production services over to an organization called Willamette Falls Studios, which they're headquartered in Oregon City. They provide, they provide production services and essentially, you know, like the, the cable access broadcasting services for governments, educational and other public types of organizations. Willamette Falls Studios is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. This is their mission. They have a really sophisticated facility that they're continuing to add on to. So this all started over the last few months with a, a notice essentially from CTV 5's board of directors that they intended to want to phase out of providing this service, but they wanted to retain the CTV, CTV 5 brand, if you will. So we've been working with, with them. They gave us, basically, they gave us formal notice that they, they intended to cease to operate and kind of give us the time to work through this transition. Willamette Falls Studios was the, was the entity that they wanted to transition to, but just in good practice with public procurement policy. We actually went out and looked at some other potential vendors that provide this service. And we essentially ran into either dead ends or just kind of, no, we can't do that. So we did explore the potential for other providers. It's, it's the amount of this for, on, for the next year. So we're going to do a one-year agreement and then we'll evaluate that. The amount of the contract for the, for that one year is under thresholds that allow me to sign that agreement and just, and just initiate that and move forward. But we'll continue this conversation. This really should be seamless and look, the look and feel of everything should be the same. Our, our current operator is actually going to go to work for them. And you'll, you'll still see him at a, a lot of our meetings, but they'll have some additional support services that they'll provide. They have a, a large staff that can provide backup. But the other thing that's, that's really cool about this is that by us signing on to work with them, they then provide this as an amenity to our community where our community members can use Willamette Falls Studios, which is just a little ways up the road in Oregon City, to, to go and use that for videoing, podcasting, music production. They have, they're building a state-of-the-art, I think they might just, just about be opening a state-of-the-art music recording studio and things like this. So they have a, a full service operation of cable access and, and those types of things that our community will have the opportunity to access because we're signing on as, as one of their communities. We're also looking to set up a, kind of a smaller scaled-down version of something in our library. All of these things are in process and we'll be making more announcements. But just a kind of a, a first announcement that we're, we're transitioning that and the current version of CTV, that board is, is essentially closing down their operations here in, in Canby and, and kind of handing that torch off to this Willamette Falls Studios. And then we're entering into this arrangement so we can keep that going. So, so everything will be the same, but there will be some improvements on top of that as well. And again, we'll, we'll have more to announce about that. And then my last thing is, we were talking about our meeting on June 29th. So just as a reminder, the, the intent there is to start at 6 o'clock. We would have a very brief urban renewal, urban renewal commission meeting to adopt the budget. And then schedule the council meeting and, and notice it at a time that would begin effectively right on the heels of when we finish the urban renewal meeting. So hopefully that will expedite and we'll, we'll be able to move through that quickly. But 6 o'clock on the 29th is what we plan to do to convene here. And if anybody needs to, of course, you can attend by Zoom as well. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Great. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Scott, regarding the CTV 5 transfer to Lamont Falls, I was just curious about the, is there going to be a transfer of ownership on equipment? Or is the city going to retain ownership of things that were purchased? Or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, those, and Joe, feel free, but yeah, those items that are ours, we retain. And then there's some other kind of complexities to that.
Yeah, there's, so anything that was bought using pig fees and was, belonged to CTV 5 could potentially go up to Lamont Falls. But if we work with them to try to set up something here in the library, then a lot of that equipment can come to us for our use and then we'll own it. We own, we retain all the stuff that we own here. Yeah. And the other one piece of this, which was kind of cool, when they came over and looked at our, kind of our initial area, was they were talking about, right now, we're keeping the CTV 5 for continuity's sake, but if they want to work with us to rebrand, so if you guys have any good ideas about rebranding and, and look and feel and stuff like that, there could be some just fun opportunities for anybody who, you know, would have been a liaison otherwise or whatever. So there's, there's kind of some cool things that could come, come about just stylistic-wise, too.
Okay. Cool beans. Anything else? All right. Second opportunity for Citizen, but seeing none? Action review.
You have approved the consent agenda. Approved ordinance number 1575 and 1576. Passed ordinance numbers 1577 and 1578 to second readings on, and 1579, sorry, and 1580 to second readings on June 29. And passed resolution numbers 1366, 1367, 1368, 1369, 1370 and 1371.
Excellent.
I have to say, it's a little more satisfying to have a three and a half, a three-hour meeting and have her read off a list like that. And then we sit here for two and a half, three hours and you're like, you've approved the consent agenda. That's a lot more satisfying list, I have to say.
Last item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Canby, we are adjourned. Good night. Thank you for tuning in.